Appeals generally have a stronger chance of proceeding if there's something that's deficient in the record, or if there's been, and there is case law disaffect, if there's been a substantial amount of evidence that's presented that's not relevant, and effectively, public pressure pressured the entity into making a decision that was contrary to its jurisdiction authority under the law. So going forward tonight, I'm going to be emphasizing and making sure that the testimony that's presented is geared to presenting evidence that is relevant to the issues the board has to consider. And again, the board planner will clarify those issues for us in a minute or two. In terms of relevant evidence, there are the factors that must be addressed that are established in the ordinance or the statute that applies to the board's decision. The New Jersey courts of rule, the considerations such as economic impacts, either on the applicant or other parties, are not relevant facts that can be considered by this board. Or there's further statements such as, "I don't like this project, I don't want it in my neighborhood," are not relevant and cannot be considered by this board in making a decision. If there is testimony tonight, or some individuals try to testify to that effect, I will caution you, that I will remind you that what you're saying is not relevant, and ask you to direct whatever you want to say toward the relevant factors the board has to consider. Now, before the board commences hearing on an application, I am giving this brief description, the planner will give a brief description of the relevant factors that must be addressed. When the hearing starts, we're now in the what's called the public portion. So, we're going to ask you to all raise your hands, not not on the screen, but raise your hands through the Zoom link, so we can see who's on. We will make sure that everybody that raises their hand will be given an opportunity to speak and give testimony on the relevant issues. In that process, again, I'm going to ask that everybody respect each other, we're not going to have people talking over each other, we're going to treat this, and it should be treated like a courtroom, and we expect the same. The hearing, as I've said before, the hearing tonight is a quasi judicial proceeding, although we are in a Zoom setting, the appropriate protocols will be followed. As the witnesses are recognized by the chairman, though, everybody gives their testimony one at a time. All other persons, I would remind you, are required to be on mute until they are recognized to testify. Finally, I trust that everyone will act in a respectful and courteous fashion. However, any party who speaks out of turn, interrupts, or disrupts the hearing may be disconnected from the Zoom meeting. I thank you in advance for your cooperation. And at this point, I'm going to ask the board planner, Mr. Petronlo, to please give a brief description as to what is relevant tonight, and what the testimony should be directed toward. Mr. Petronlo?
Thank you, Mr. Crook. Good evening, members of the board, everyone. My name is, says Joseph Petronlo, I'm the board's planner. The application before the board tonight is for a conditional use variance and site plan approval. As we discussed at the prior meeting, reemphasize again tonight, a conditional use variance is a use that has been determined by the governing body of the municipality to be permitted in the zone with certain conditions. So the question before the board tonight is not whether or not the use is appropriate in the zone, that's already been determined by our zoning ordinance and adopted by governing body. The question is, does this site remain appropriate at this location despite the fact that it does not comply to some of the conditions? That's all we're looking at for the conditional use. So the question is, is it still appropriate here despite the fact that it does not meet some of the conditions? The conditions that the site does not meet, and testimony was provided at the last meeting, under section 15443B, there's a minimum lot depth of 125 feet and a minimum lot width of 200 feet. This site complies with the lot width, the lot width is 385 feet, but it does not comply with the lot depth, and that's the 120 feet, the existing site, and that's because of the notch out of the property at the intersection. It does not comply with the requirement that walls of any building shall be set back at least 25 feet from every adjoining property, property line, or required buffer zone, and at least 50 feet from any right-of-way. The proposed building is set back 26 feet, or 24 feet, excuse me, from Sixth Avenue. The minimum building height shall not exceed 20 feet, that does, that's not for the canopy, it's for the actual building itself, and the applicant is proposing 33.3 foot high building. There's a requirement that all, all displays and sales of merchandise shall be made or sold within a completely enclosed building, the applicant's proposing to have propane tanks for sale on the property, those will be outside. And then finally, the ordinance states that the use of the same lot or parcel for retail food facilities or fast food services is not permitted in conjunction with the use of the lot or parcel for a motor vehicle service station, so they don't comply with that requirement. Again, testimony was provided by the applicant to each of those individual points, and they were addressed at the applicant in their testimony. Relative to the use of the site, though, they're the only things we're looking at. It's, does this site remain appropriate for this use despite not complying to those conditions? There are some, what are referred to as C variances, that are also part of this application, relative to signage, relative to the number of parking spaces. Again, the applicant hasn't gone through those variances as well, they're, they are for the site plan portion of the project. C variances are broken into a C1 and a C2. A C1 has to do with hardship, is there a particular hardship on this property that is unusual, and therefore, the applicant should be granted a variance? C2 has to do with the purposes of zoning, whether or not the benefits of the variance advance purposes of zoning, or whether it's a better alternative than the permitted, than what would be required by the ordinance. That's the criteria for the C variances, the burden for C variance is not as high as the burden for D variance. Finally, there is also the negative criteria which needs to be addressed, and that is whether or not the granting of the variance would be a substantial detriment to the public good, or a substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. For a conditional use variance, the full burden of the negative criteria is not as stressed due to the fact that, again, the use is allowed in the zone, therefore, it's not a question of whether or not there's a impact on the zone plan or the zoning ordinance, the question is, what are the impacts from those deviations? And that's what the board's going to be looking at tonight. The board is not allowed to take into consideration proximity to similar uses, or competition in the area, there's court case law on that, that says we're not allowed to consider that, that's not up open for our debate or discussion tonight. In addition, all frontages of this property are under the control and jurisdiction of the New Jersey Department of Transportation. So the zoning board has no jurisdiction restrictions or controls over the access driveways, traffic, those types of items, they're all under the jurisdiction of the New Jersey Department of Transportation. We don't even have the option to put requirements on, because anything we do is superseded by NJDOT. The D portion of the variance does need a five affirmative votes to be approved. The C variances and site plan is just a majority vote of the members. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have of me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Crook, would you please swear in the professionals?
Gentlemen, could you please raise your right hands to be sworn? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Prime, are you, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We only have one small change, which we'd sent to your planner in advance of the meeting, we're just making some modifications to the signs, I have our engineer here can testify to exactly what that is, but they're minor, and that would be the only change, and then we're, we're ready to close after that. If I could just have Matt Sharrow briefly testify to the sign changes, I believe Mr. Petronlo had reviewed these in advance of the meeting.
I have, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and reviewed the proposed amendments for their signage.
All right, thank you. And just note, your professionals are still sworn in from the last meeting.
Thank you.
You can proceed.
Thank you. Matt, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, great. If you could briefly just describe the changes that we were, that I was just talking about to our signage?
Sure, the first one would be the sign along Hartford Road. The current proposal has it at 20 feet high and 59.8 square foot, a more typical pylon-type sign that sits on two poles with a base. What we're, what we're changing it to would be a more of a monument-style sign, that's eight, that's seven foot, four inches high, and three, and 35 square feet, and that would sit directly on a base. So that the sign almost, you know, almost gets cut in half and is brought down to eight feet. It's important to note that that sign would meet the sign requirements for height and size and setback. The second one, and I can show, share my screen just to show everybody where that sign, I need to be enabled to share screen. So everybody can see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Yep. Is it the, it's the, you can see my cursor?
Yes.
All right, so that the sign I was talking about would be this sign that's at the Hartford Road access point. The second sign would be the sign that was, that was proposed on the corner facade of the canopy, and I'll get a better look at this on, I think this is Exhibit A5, I believe, the canopy and trash enclosure elevation, so we'd be eliminating this sign that's on the facade of the, the Wawa canopy. So those are the two, those are the two changes to signage that we are making as part of this application.
Mr. Sharrow, could you just make sure that a copy of that is sent to my office?
Well, the exhibits didn't change.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
You got it.
And Mr. Sharrow, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Already marked exhibit, so we just have to have the record reflect where he was doing his pointer, which will be preserved on the recording.
Yep, that's, sorry, and I'll, I just looked it up, it's Exhibit A6 is the canopy elevation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to clarify, the applicant had actually just sent over a copy of detail for the new sign for my review prior to the meeting to ensure that it was in fact consistent with the ordinance. That sign is consistent, he hasn't actually formally submitted it, and he's asking as part of tonight's meeting to amend his variances as stated, so that the one freestanding sign along Route 38 will still be 59.8 square feet, 20 foot high, the freestanding sign along Hartford will now be 35 square feet and seven feet, four inches high, which does meet the ordinance requirements.
Thank you.
He does, he does need a variance, though, for two freestanding signs, but the sign, the second sign itself is compliant.
I'd also like to note, this is Matt Sharrow again, that eliminating the canopy facade sign eliminates a variance as well.
That is true, yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Sharrow, these changes were based on feedback from the planner at the last meeting in an effort to try to soften the impact of the signage, is that correct?
That is correct. So we, we took some comments from the planner, as well as the engineer and your board, and looked to, looked, got together with Wawa on the applicant to see where we could, you know, make some of the sign changes to, to soften the amount of signs on the site, and that the, the size of the sign on the site.
Thank you. So if there are any questions on the signage from your professionals or the board, we'd be happy to address those, otherwise, that, that's our only change, and we're ready to proceed with the public comment.
Right, thank you, Mr. Prime. Is there anybody from the board that would like to speak regarding these changes? And if not, at this time, I will like to open up the public portion of this meeting. Now, before I do that, please note, again, the only way that you're going to get to speak is if you use the raise hand button on your sidebar on Zoom, and I will call on you based on that. Once, once I call on you, you will be asked to be sworn in by our board attorney, and you will need to give your full name and your address before being sworn in. Again, the items that we are considering this evening were detailed by our board attorney and the planner, so we respectfully ask that when giving your testimony, please try to focus on those. Again, if not, we will be, we will ask you to refrain from anything that's not relevant, and only speak to what is. Also, when giving your testimony, if you have a particular question that you would like to ask of the applicant, I ask that you clearly express the question, and we will ask the applicant to respond to each question at the time that it's asked. We're not going to do a whole bunch of questions and then try to remember what questions were asked, we're going to do one at a time. So with that being said, Mr. Crook, is there anything else that you'd like to add before I open?
No, Mr. Chairman, I get, the only other suggestion I might add, at least for the board's consideration is, is because of Stiles-Sinoco, they've submitted significant amount of materials and, and evidence, proposed evidence, I'd suggest maybe they would be a good starting point in terms of the, the initial public testimony. That's, of course, the board's call, that's just my suggestion.
Okay, thank you, no, I agree with that. Okay, so at this point, I, at this time, I will open the public portion of this meeting, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe one of the two people that I would like to call first is either Darlene Jo Wilson or Sean Wilson. Whichever one is the owner of the Stiles-Sinoco, could you please unmute yourself?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Wilson.
Hello.
Okay, you're getting a little feedback there. If you could, please state your full name and your address and be sworn in.
Yeah, Sean Wilson, Sean Wilson at 45 Dean's Way.
And Mr. Wilson, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn in. Maybe before we do that, I, there's, there's something that's, sir, do you have your phone and, and another computer or something near you, because there's feedback coming through whenever you speak?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to fix that now.
Okay, because otherwise, it might be, might make it difficult for the board to understand your testimony, so.
Okay.
Why don't you take a moment to fix that and?
Right. Is that, is that better now?
That sounds a lot better, sir, yeah.
Sounds better.
All right.
Okay, so I think we're ready to proceed. Please raise your right hand to be sworn, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
So, yes, so, oh my God.
And is Darlene Jo also going to testify?
Yes, yes, she is.
Ma'am, why don't you swear you in also?
I believe that, I believe that both of you being on a microphone is what's causing the feedback.
Right.
Is it possible for you to use, both use the same computer?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think what you're trying to say is, they're, they have two mics open in the same room, that's causing the problem, they need to turn off one audio, yeah, that's it.
I think that should work better.
We're still getting the feedback.
Yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I can see Darlene, but I can't see Sean.
I believe they're going to be sharing the same computer screen, this way they can have one mic pronounced.
Is that the case, Mr. Wilson?
Now they're both muted, they need to open one mic.
I'm sorry, I'm going to get, I got it.
Sounds good now, that sounds great.
Sounds very good now, so.
Okay, I think we got it.
And ma'am, I wasn't sure whether you were sworn in, so let's swear you in also, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I think we're ready to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. and Mrs. Wilson, if you'd like to proceed?
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, and, all right, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, first, we'd like to thank you in advance for your patience in hearing our concerns and allowing us this opportunity to speak tonight. We are the franchise owners of Stiles-Sinoco Ultra Service Center, a second-generation family-owned and operated small business since 1966. Our Mount Laurel location of 45 years is at this corner, Route 38 and Hartford Road, next to the applicant's site since 1975. My parents, my three sisters, our three nephews, our three children, and many of their friends have all worked here, along with myself, since I was 14. And we also are all Lenape High School graduates. My husband and I owned, have owned and own three homes in Mount Laurel over the past 28 years, which means we both live here, we both work here, and we both are strong contributors to this community, sponsoring student fundraised, sorry, very nervous, sponsoring student fundraised car, through car washes at our stations, coaching township soccer and hockey leagues, and financial supporters of our area's fellowship of Christian athletes. I am a certified Sinoco Ultra Service Center franchise dealer, and have been at our families' businesses since I was two years old, and again, started, pump gas when I was 14.
I've been certified ASC Master Tech over 33 years, and I, I'm at this location five to six days a week, in an average of 70, 60 to 70 hours, ever since 1992.
So, first, we want to clear up some confusion, that this has already been entered on the record about us. We recognize and we appreciate the education and the guidance that businesses, business competition issues are not something the zoning board may consider. However, competition is not our concern. On the contrary, we believe that our auto care and repair service center, and well, actually, the entire block, will see an increase in business, which will also bring positive and negative things to everyone involved. We have researched, we have read, we have fervently sought out counsel, but to no avail, all have objected to advising us due to their conflict of interests in this township. And because this is happening during the weeks surrounding Christmas and New Year's, and let's not forget, our actual family members who are struggling with COVID. Nonetheless, we do believe we now understand the questions the board must decide. How squeezing a super Wawa gas station and convenience store that, one, does not meet the conditions in the ordinance, and, two, that doesn't fit in what the town's government intended when they created the list of conditions for a service station? Unfortunately, at the last meeting on the December 16th, the applicant and the board members alike raised concerns that made us uncomfortably aware of how much avoidance would be given to issues regarding potential gas station competition. In doing so, the applicant intentionally has failed to address the impacts of the application and the variances that they want on adjoining nearby properties. They've adored, to a large extent, we believe, how the surrounding land uses will also impact them. To put it simply, their plan requires too many deviations and too little of a space. As some of you may know, the planning board recently approved a Taco Bell on the opposite side of the proposed Wawa convenience store, that also needed parking variances because their lot is also too small. We're concerned that the separate approvals are ignoring the reality that consumers will use our Sinoco service station, their proposed Wawa, the Taco Bell, Laurel Liquors, Walnut, and Sixth Avenue's U-turn, and Hartford Road as one big interstate highway truck rest stop. We're apprehensive that the proposed design creates a safety issue on and off all four destination sites that I mentioned, because of the way the consumers will use this area. I'd like you to, Suzanne O'Hagan, please, Board Secretary, give my daughter Shannon Wilson the ability to screen share for us. One of the applicant's exhibits that was presented in the last meeting, it's marked as A7-3. Okay, great. Can we see it? Yes?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. This map, prepared by the applicant, claims to accurately show adjoining uses. These were the assumptions Wawa's engineers and planners used as their basis for their calculations and opinions they gave to the board, but there are several errors. Not only concerned about the impact of our Sinoco property, but our family members own this red commercial vacant lot that's mismarked, dislabeled, and should be yellow for residential, like those, like these lots right here on each side of it, next to the animal hospital. And this property here is also mislabeled red commercial vacant lot, it should be green for a natural land. Purchased by the state in 1988, when Route 38 and Hartford Road were both widened at this, at this cutoff right here, and the U-turns, when U-turns were created. These residential lots down here, they will negative, negative, I'm sorry, they will negatively impacted by the combined gas and food services. The ordinance prohibits as a condition of having a gas station in the zone. The applicant needs a long list of variances and waivers separately and together for this combined use. This intersection right here, near our family's residential lot, along with all of these residents, will suffer safety issues created by this plan. All here, where Sixth Avenue looks like a dead end, it's not, but we'll come back to that. Let's continue with the errors on this exhibit. So, first, we are not, and I'm quoting here, a gas station with a convenience store, right? And combining these two uses was something the town had wanted all of those years ago, when they prohibited it in the ordinance, we would have already had one for Sinoco, when we opened back in 1975, and we don't. We are not Wawa's competition, and they are not ours in this aspect. The bulk of our business is auto care and repair, as intended in the ordinance, and we appreciate the applicant's correction, would appreciate the applicant's correction to this exhibit for the record, and there is no convenience store at our business. Okay, so next, the bank is also Okay, so next, the bank is also mislabeled. It's a new restaurant. It's Taco Bell that's under construction. Next exhibit also fails to indicate that over here, that Luke Oil Gas Station is a convenience, has a convenience store directly across Route thirty-eight. It's not labeled. While some might wonder how gas stations clustered together aren't actually competing against one another, as we have just recently been educated by the applicant and also by executives in places who have studies showing that clusters with differing brands of gas and services near an interstate exit like we are now will yield more customers than a single station alone. Also, when we were across from a legacy Wawa for nine years at our other Sunoco location on Church Street, we really, we also enjoyed the benefits of having a convenience store across from our location. But we love Sunoco, don't we all? Okay, consumers purchasing Sunoco gas or receiving maintenance or repair on their vehicle will want either Wawa or Taco Bell or both. Some will park at Taco Bell and walk to Wawa, or the other way around. Uh, the point here is rather than scaring everyone about avoiding comments about competition of the adjoining gas and food service sites. The applicant should have instead analyzed and likely, the likely pedestrian and repeat entry and exits of vehicles at more than one site and the number of customers who will be circling the block multiple times in a single visit. Customers will treat this area as a single destination. We believe Wawa's experts did not do the right and complete analysis for this conditional use at this location. Their opinions and calculations are based on Wawa's corporate assumptions. It's a reality that just doesn't fit here at this site. So, next, my daughter is going to share the applicant's exhibit A dash one. We hope the board will see and understand it is the negative aspects of this increased business that we expect that concerns us. Uh, based on the plan and testimony from Wawa, not the competition, but rather a lack of planning for this area to be what it will become and what is particular, what this particular conditional use has failed to meet the, the conditions. One huge poorly designed rest area accidentally integrated without a proper design plan for Route thirty-eight, Walnut and Sixth Avenue, the U-turn, Hartford Road, and these residential lots, and the continuing side street behind Taco Bell, which leads to office buildings back here. Laurel Liquors, Tires Plus, and with, and with the cars, commercial vehicles and trucks coming off the interstate of two ninety-five, twenty-four, seven. As a full-service station, we don't have self-serve. Our customers stay in their vehicles until they finish their purchase and then they drive off. But once Wawa opens, all bets are off. All of this will change. Passengers will leave their cars, not wanting to wait in their dri, I'm sorry. Passengers will leave their cars, not wanting to wait with their drivers, and walk to Wawa. The driver may either pull away and pick up their passenger. They may stay, put, and wait, or they may need to park on our site because Wawa's short on parking spaces, remember? It was stated in their, it was stated that their spaces were also to be designed smaller than usual in hopes of deterring large diesel trucks from visiting their site. However, these trucks and oversized vehicles will still come, and, but they will park on Walnut and Sixth Avenue, which in turn, again, will create another unexpected negative impact of such an unsafe condition on our U-turn. So, next, we're going to share the, an exhibit that is one of ours. I'm marking it as, um, S fourteen because it's the last one that we sent. S one to S fourteen, I hope that's okay. Um, this exhibit represents all of our uncontrolled potential traffic patterns. Our first introduction, of course, to Taco Bell on this block. Taco Bell was not included or acknowledged as part of the applicant's traffic study or even ever mentioned at all, along with none of the other neighboring businesses either. This picture shows the traffic flow throughout Sunoco, Wawa, and Taco Bell's driveways. Nothing, uh, notice all of, of our multiple ways to enter and exit Wawa's site. There's no real clear traffic pattern or circulation flow. We believe decisions the board makes here today at this local level will adversely affect traffic on the surrounding roads at all levels. The synergy that exists in this land use decision concerning the residents and businesses alike must be addressed by making use of circulation elements in the master plan. Just like in nineteen eighty-eight, when the state purchased the land and constructed this cutoff, the, uh, from Route thirty-eight to Hartford Road, along with the U-turn and left turns across from Luke Oil Gas Station, and also by turning Walnut and Sixth Avenues into U-turns and a left turn to ease traffic congestion at that time. Uh, the Route thirty-eight cutoff on Hartford Road has a sign that reads "No Left Turns", which hasn't kept vehicles from coming straight across Hartford Road uh, into our driveway, in and out of our driveway. So, see this attachment here where, uh, that marked as S one, it's an accident dot one exhibit. This vehicle smashed into our curb when it was hur, and then it was hurled up on top of our landscaped area. This will happen again to new applicants, to the new applicants Hartford Road's entrance as well. And they will also be more apt to have vehicles attempting and hit, um, passengers, uh, left turn also into their driveway off of Hartford Road because of the type of business they will track with their combined use. We urgently offer that an alternate permitted development would mitigate the detrimental impact and benefit the public's welfare. Next, we're gonna have the exhibit, uh, labeled S six for proposed driveways. Now, imagine driving down Route thirty-eight in front of our two stations. I'm sorry, uh, our two driveways, as vehicles are exiting and entering at the exact same time, my vehicles are moving in the right lane to turn onto or off of our property, and another vehicle moves also in the right lane to turn into Wawa's and takes a, the U-turn or turns into Taco Bell or Laurel Liquors. With all that said, our two exits and entrances are sixty feet apart. Okay. Okay, sixty feet apart. Well, Walnut Avenue's and Taco Bell's entrances are more than sixty feet apart. Taco Bell is also sixty feet from Laurel Liquors. The only entrance that is not properly distanced is the, is, uh, the applicant's proposed entrance at thirty-six feet. Our S two and S three attractions, which I'm not gonna bring up now, exhibits, you can look at it later, they also are self-explanatory as the accidents have happened again and again in our location by this very instance that I just explained. Additionally, there is a New Jersey Transit bus line that runs along Route thirty-eight and stops across the street at the corner of Luke Oil and Hartford Road, which then goes to Rowan College, which is right down to, and then another one at Moran Highway. With both a new convenience store and a Taco Bell, there will be increased pedestrian crossing and additional activity on all of our surrounding intersections. Consider a truck signaling to move left, to turn, uh, signaling to move left to turn right onto Wawa's site and suddenly stopping for an onsite pedestrian crossing over from our station or from another side of thirty-eight, causing the truck to abruptly stop and protrude out into the highway unexpectedly. Something to remember is that this combined use will help push the creation of a rest stop. Not just a Super Wawa, but one that encourages pedestrians to cross between all of these properties in the attempt to make their trip a one-stop shop and leave their vehicles at any one of the three gas stations, pumps, or parking lots, which has happened between Luke Oil and us. Ex-customer will continue to cross intersections that were not intended for pedestrian use. There are only a few of us, I'm sorry, there are only as few of the many issues. These are only a few of the many issues from our experiences of operating a service station all of these years. Let's not even begin to think of the horror stories that we could imagine with our student-run car washes and bake sale fundraisers. We would really need to re, thoroughly rethink even if an event that's been taking place since I was in high school could even safely function again within this new atmosphere in the future. Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to my husband.
So, I'm gonna try to pick up from, give her a break for a second. Um, we're gonna look at, at the Wawa exhibit, uh, semi-trucks fifty-five feet, um, page four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. All right, uh, this, uh.
Real quick, Mr. Crook, has this one, a particular, uh, exhibit been numbered?
I've been trying to, I've been trying to identify which one it is, but I don't have the.
It's number twenty-four of.
But it hasn't been identified.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's been entered in as official, um, exhibit. It was in the original engineering package, I believe.
Yes.
I believe in terms of the A exhibits, I'm trying to figure out and go back to how far we got with the A exhibits.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's taking me a while to get through.
No, that's fine. I'm sorry, I just thought I missed something.
We stopped the A exhibits at A seven.
Okay, well, this, just for the convenience of the record, we're gonna call it A eight. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Brian?
Yes, that's fine.
You know, I understand you're not presenting it and whether or not you want it moved into evidence is your prerogative, but it is part of the packet, and I believe that the, you know, the, the styles do have the right to reference it since it was part of the original packet that was presented. So, we're gonna mark it as A eight. You can make whatever argument you like as to what relevance it has or not. Uh, when it's your, when it's your client's opportunity to counsel, okay?
Thank you.
And I just, just for the point, I wasn't, I didn't want to step in, I don't want to be rude. Uh, but I wanted just to remind the, the styles that Route thirty-eight and Sixth Avenue and Hartford Road are all under the jurisdiction of DOT. And we talked about relevant evidence previously. Although your concerns, I'm not gonna de-minimize your concerns, but there are concerns that this board cannot consider in making its decision. We, we really need you to focus on the factors that are relevant to the conditional use as well as the, the C variances and waivers that are on site. So, to the extent you're talking about traffic circulation on site and the impacts, that's entirely appropriate, but and I didn't interrupt before I let you put it on the record, but I'm gonna suggest and request that you keep your testimony as limited as you can to the issues pertaining to the conditional use and the bulk variances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And some of the traffic stuff was, it did touch on thirty-eight, but it's also on the site and around the site that you are Sixth Street and stuff that you can, um, discuss, correct?
We, it's my understanding that DOT, because that's a jug handle that feeds off of thirty-eight and goes to Hartford, that that is, that thirty-eight, Sixth Avenue, and Hartford are all under the jurisdiction of DOT.
Just, just to clarify, uh, the entire frontage of this property on all four roads is under the jurisdiction of DOT.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, this is a member, Francis, just so I understand, and, and also the, the, the people that are testifying understand. I think what we're saying is, is that anything to do with any of the public roads around the property, our board, we're not even allowed to think about, the state has to think about that. That's where you can talk about that with the state. But to the extent anything on the property itself with the design as it relates to any of the conditional use variances, the four or five of them they're asking for, or the, what we call the bulk variances, parking lot sizes, all that's relevant, that's correct, right? So, the applicant wants to talk about circulation on the site itself and connect it to one of the things we're being considered, that's appropriate, right? We just, if it has anything to do with the roads, then it's not us, right? So, if it's the roads, thirty-eight, Sixth Avenue, Hartford, we're tied, right?
We don't have any ability to impact on that, and then if we considered it, then we would be outside of our authority and arguably be creating a reversible error if we allowed that type of testimony.
Okay. But to the extent they talk about onsite, within their property proposed, as it relates to the variances being requested, that's, that's okay testimony.
That's a hundred percent appropriate, yes, and it, and some of their testimony was touching on that, which is why I didn't interrupt at the time.
Yeah, we were trying not to push on just the trap, but the flow of, of everything. You know, in, in and out and, and around, which I'll, I'll continue like a little bit on that, but most of the rest of the stuff is, uh, we, we try to, we try to hone in on every, all the variances that, that is being asked. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to continue, okay?
Proceed.
All right. This site plan is, is, um, so bad for delivery trucks can't exit onto to Sixth Street without violating motor vehicle statutes by crossing the center line into, uh, oncoming traffic. No matter how low the standards of the ver variance are, um, according to the Wawa's attorney, we don't think you can authorize driving and breaking rule laws to provide, to, um, approve this site. Well, um, now, as long as we were talking about, um, issues with variances behind this, behind the site, the Wawa, as businesses, oh, owners on the block, and again, the family residence across the street behind, looking at the back of the building. We're gonna put up a picture of the setback that is already there. It's the, it's the, um, this is our picture S eight. It's a setback of the building that's already on the property. And from the, um, from your plans, it's saying it's twenty-four point nine feet away from, away from the, uh, street. That's the setback on it. And Wawa's proposing twenty-four feet, even smaller than what is already there. Wawa wishes to use this space as a loading zone for trucks and trailers. However, it is clear that this size vehicle will not easily be fit, fit the small space behind, behind it. Most of the, from refrigerated tractor trailers, uh, that Wawa uses has a side door so that you have to use a ramp to unload the truck, and it's like an eight-foot ramp to unload it. So, you're even making the space even smaller that it might not even be able to do that. Um, with the limits, um, amounts of space that the truck has, and the fact that there's no buffer or sidewalk to deter the person, the truck driver to, um, unload, he's just gonna pull on the street because it's gonna, simply, it's gonna be easier for him to do it and unload from the street because the building is close enough. And we're not even concerned about the, the look of it to the properties behind it that they, we had.
That's still vacant.
That's still vacant, but is zoned as a business, so someday it's gonna be an office there.
There's no attention to the fact that the back doors of Wawa will be, they'll be looking at the back of their business for whoever would purchase that site. So, we're concerned that, consumers.
Yeah, with the, with the offices behind it, I think it's better suited that if they had a back entrance like they do on, um, at the other site on thirty-eight and Moran Highway. So, it would be better off, but again, the property is not big enough for this kind of condition. If we lost the gas and get rid of the pumps, you can move the building and you could have a convenience store, and, and the property may, may fit. And it'd be the permitted use.
Uh, Sean, that twenty-four foot is actually eighteen feet. It's twenty-four foot setback, but it's eighteen feet from the, or the drive area is eighteen feet.
Mr., uh, excuse me, you can't, you can't be doing that.
We're not gonna have people talking versus the styles that are testifying.
Please do, please do not come off of mute unless you're one of the people that I've, uh, allowed to speak at this time, okay? Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna continue.
Our next exhibit.
Our next exhibit, S nine sidewalks. The Taco Bell has already been approved for sidewalks completely around it, has that, handicap accesses at both corners. Um, but the proposed Wawa has no access for handicap or sidewalks or any way for the people from Taco Bell to safely cross the street to get to Wawa. And the office buildings also all have driveways and handicap accesses and sidewalks. But again, the backside of Wawa does ha- not have any way for pedestrians to safely get to the back of the building to use their facility. You know, I think that, that's a plan that.
S eleven.
We're gonna go to S eleven, just, it just brings the property of the, uh, the Taco Bell so that you can see on the corners that there's a sidewalk all the way around and that there's two ways that has handicap access to, to cross the street safely. I, you know, this was not, not in the plans or considered as far as, as we know. We're gonna look at S nine now. Again, it's just, it's just the connection of, you can see those sidewalks that's behind the property that's already there and you having something built new and it's required that we, we put their sidewalks to connect to that.
And I know you can't discuss these roads, but there are no shoulders and there's no stopping and standing. It is a U-turn.
So with the added traffic, we're concerned about the pedestrians, um, right away through, through this, um, intersection. So, and I also wanted to point out on the left hand, if you look at the four pictures here, on the left hand, left hand top is the corner of Sixth Street. And we wanted to point out that the cars, there's residence, a multifamily residence house right there. And the property next to it is, is one of our family members that was gonna build a house there also. Um, and which is residential and the lights in the cars will be right in there, right through their windows all night long, twenty-four seven. Um, you also have, this is the only place that we can make a left out of that whole.
Block.
The whole block, all this whole rest stop that we're creating. Um, and we have to cross four or five lanes to get to make that left. So I'll, I'll stop on the, the traffic stuff. So my wife's gonna pick up her passion and, uh, continue on.
Okay, so we're going to now go ahead and go to S seven for our security hazards. The property once was, oops, I forgot to get, I'm so sorry. The property once was completely covered by trees. And during the removal, without notice, some of the trees were cut down during, before, before we could physically, my husband physically get out there and stop them. Consequently, a new pathway that you saw in that, uh, previous video, that back area. Nope, before that, that one, we got the left-hand corner. That new pathway consequently, uh, was created, which never was there. When that opening was created behind our property, since then, we've experienced homeless people sleeping in our restroom, inside of our sheds and behind our station. Captured on video surveillance, our vending machines have been broken into and vehicles broken into, items stolen from behind our station and captured. And apprehended drug sales on two robberies and at the gas station, the two robberies I get across the street at the gas station in New York. And the neighboring robberies, uh, where a suspect was caught on camera behind our station hiding out from, uh, a neighbor that he had robbed their house and then was going through the items behind our house, uh, station, so sorry. Okay, with the removal of our remaining trees at the backside of the property, we will be exposed and lose our natural barrier of security and protection. There does not seem to be a plan to protect our property from the accidental destruction and caused by Wawa's plan to cut down twenty trees. Wawa and the public would benefit from an alternate site development with allowable permitting use zoning without the need of a conditional use and other variances that would match a previous rhythm that the bank and the macro equipment has held for this safe flow of traffic. We also have, um, a sewer pumping station, uh, located.
Behind.
Behind our station or on our station. We also have, we have our own well, water. We're not connected to the city waters. And we don't believe that we're protected by that. We don't think Wawa even knows about that. It's not marked on any of the maps, has not been entered in on the record anywhere. There's no mention of it either, so we're wondering how we're going to be able to be safeguarded, um, in regards to that. And next we're gonna go to, uh, Wawa's exhibit, uh, the aerial map overlay. Was this presented before? Oh, A one, I'm sorry. This picture shows the green areas on the property. But it's misleading because the biggest green area that they have is a retention pond, which ends up being water and trash, no, no trees. There's also not any bushes or buffers to block the residential view, which is only a hundred feet away from the trash area. There, there aren't any bushes around it or a buffer to block the trash from the street. The impervious coverage leaves very little room for trees or foliage. Also, the residents in this area would be hit with lights from the cars attempting to make the left turn, as we said. Alright, so, almost done. Moving on to S four, the flood zone. Engineers will argue that the applicant's water management plan will not adversely affect drainage facilities in this neighborhood by adding to an already existing stormwater runoff, which floods Hartford Road and Union Mill Roads. With the seventy-two hour, um, with seventy-two hours, all overflow drainage ends up in the Parker's Creek five hundred feet away. The same was argued by the engineers for the new Briggs Row development, but in reality, it is called additional flooding. Flooding occurs once a while, however, now on Hartford Road and Union Mill Roads, it is with every single downpour. Uh, we've also, um, experienced the sewer pump house tanks being there every single week to, to pump out that it's a pumping station, right? As we're here every day, we have also experienced Hartford Road sewer main breaks, which resulted in a six-month road closure back in two thousand seventeen. And it broke again several times in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. And currently throughout two twenty twenty, uh, I'm sorry, at least once every week, the tanker truck has been at the sewer pumping station at the corner of Hartford Road and Union Mill Roads, as I was saying, pumping it out and keeping up with the system. This past week, uh, it was only on Friday on twelve eighteen, but also on Monday on twelve twenty-one. And that was before the torrential rains that we received on Christmas Eve. Going back to Wawa's exhibit page one, um, this is the aerial view again of the applicants submitted, which will be, well, I'm sorry, will otherwise known as the new Mount Laurel two ninety-five area rest stop area. If you can get the applicant that conforms to the ordinances, it might work. But this present plan is not safe because the planning was not integrated, integrate, integrated. Fuel and other delivery trucks just don't work with both fuel and convenience stores. No, uh, cooperative parking, there's no certain, between us, there's no circulation easements or even to ensure the consumers using this area as a single destination with multiple food services and fuel options impacting movement among the sites and the neighboring streets. Alright, a new development that also was not taken into consideration, consideration is the Amazon warehouse that is being built in Lumberton. Now, those truck drivers will stop here for lunch and because it's the only Wawa on the side of the road before their stop and it's going to happen no matter if there's a sign there or not saying they can't. So in conclusion, Mister Chairman and Board, that wraps up our presentation. We're here, we've heard from both attorneys that they mentioned that this application needs to meet a lower standard than what you normally do. But no one has clearly told us what the objective standards are for when to allow this combined two uses on one site. The ordinances list conditions for a service station like ours and one of the conditions is not to do that, what Wawa is doing. There are no standards for when to allow the two uses, use deviations in an ordinance. The applicant's land is too small for this. The evidence they gave in terms of traffic flows, pedestrian activities and other important details were intentionally incomplete to downplay the impact on the neighborhood. A neighborhood that does still have residents, even if it's close to the highway. This development should not be approved with this present site plan that Wawa proposes. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you, Mister and Mrs. Wilson. Mister Prime, uh, would you like to, at this time, respond to, um, any of the comments made?
Sure, I, I, I think, I mean, first and foremost.
There were a few questions kind of in there, so I wa- I just wanted to.
Yeah, there's certainly a lot going on there, but I mean, I think first and foremost, uh, a lot of that was opinion. I mean, to the best of my knowledge, neither of the, uh, witnesses that just spoke or qualified experts as engineers, planners, traffic engineers, none of the testimony provided in any factual basis. I mean, it was just opinion. Uh, we could certainly correct.
We are there every day, so it's not opinion, it's experience. We live there every day.
Ma'am, this is not a time for back and forth. You've had your opportunity.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Now you have to get that.
I've never done this before. I'm trying my best to follow all the rules and I, I do apologize.
Okay, no problem. Just going forward. Let's, let's respect their right to talk. Thank you.
We can touch briefly, if, if, if time allows, I'll, uh, just bring in my traffic engineer quickly to touch on some of those things and our site engineer, uh, just a couple of minutes each and, and then we can move forward.
Uh, proceed.
Uh, Nick, uh, Vernice, our traffic engineer, if you're available and you wanna just touch on a few things, uh, or start there.
And just for the record, Mister Vernice has been sworn in and is still under oath.
Yes, thank you. Um, just wanted to touch on a couple of items. There was some discussion as to, uh, the driveways on the highway and not meeting the requirements, uh, the spacing requirements. The driveway for the Wawa meets the spacing requirements of the Department of Transportation. The distance from Walnut Avenue as well as the distance to the neighboring Sunoco driveway. The minimum required is twenty-four or forty feet from the neighbor's driveway. Uh, the minimum from the intersection is one hundred feet. We are one hundred and eleven feet from the intersection. The driveways that actually do not meet the requirements of the Department of Transportation are the, uh, Westley Most Sunoco driveway violates the, uh, criteria of the DOT as well as the Taco Bell driveway also violates the requirements of DOT. So of all the three properties along this stretch, the Wawa is the only one that will now meet the requirements of the Department of Transportation. Additionally, there were some discussions on loading. Uh, we have a twenty-two foot wide loading zone shown now. We are gonna modify that to just provide a twelve-foot loading zone. We don't need twenty-two feet to do the loading. The truck will pull up next to the building. Uh, the, the door that, uh, that they come in is on the east side, basically the southeast corner of the building. So the truck will park, uh, utilize the ramp as noted by our neighbor uh, and enter from that, uh, east side of the building so that, and, and the, the door for the truck is near the rear of the truck. So we'll, uh, properly be able to, uh, access the rear. Uh, Wawa is not in the business of designing loading zones that don't work and forcing trucks to park somewhere else. Uh, we have so many sites with proper loading zones. Uh, we've designed, uh, upwards of a hundred different Wawas, uh, throughout the state of New Jersey. Uh, so we're very familiar with Wawa standards and requirements for loading, so we're very confident, uh, in that loading. And I did mention some change in the rear, uh, in a discussion with the board's traffic engineer. He requested that we, uh, add some additional signage back there to, uh, create a one-way circulation from east to west, so we will provide that uh, to allow someone on the east side of the building to circulate in the rear, uh, to travel along the south side of the building. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Nick. And, uh, Matt Charrow, if you could quickly jump on, maybe address the sidewalks. I heard, uh, some comments related to circulation pedestrian, maybe talk about the upgrades, because we did make some changes during the last meeting as to what we could cover.
Yep, sure. I'm gonna share my screen, uh, again, this is. Everybody can see the render that was presented last time. I believe this is exhibit, I believe this is exhibit A three. So, um, as noted at the last hearing, uh, we will be providing sidewalks to connect the intersection at Sixth Avenue and Hartford Road. We'll be running the sidewalk in both directions in a northerly fashion along Hartford Road to meet up at the Hartford Road driveway. And then we'll, we'll be running sidewalk along Sixth Avenue in the easterly direction to meet up with the driveway at the Sixth Avenue driveway. This will provide, um, pedestrian access from Hartford Avenue. Also, pedestrians can, can leave Taco Bell and go around the front of the site along Route thirty-eight. We have sidewalks there that we're proposing per DOT. That sidewalk can get you to the DOT entrance, um, the DOT roadway off thirty-eight and get you into the site, uh, to, to safely have pedestrians enter from any, any, any roadway off the site.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And also, um, quickly, we have our, our planner as well, John McDonough. If you wanna just jump on quickly and talk about, maybe a little bit about the neighborhood, I know we heard some, some testimony on an exhibit. Uh, maybe you could provide some clarification on that as well.
Sure, uh, thanks Tyler. Again, uh, Mister Chairman, Board members, this is an exhibit that was previously presented. It was part of the packet that our interested party just showed, and this is simply the next slide in the exhibit to remind the board that the subject site and every parcel around it is zoned for non-residential uses, including that DOT parcel that was mentioned, that's why we showed it as a non-residential designation. Reminding the board as well that not a single piece of this property touches a residential zone, in fact, Sixth Avenue. And the residential uses that are on Hartford are immediately opposite non-residential zoning, so the influence of any non-residential land use on Sixth Avenue is something that is contemplated in the zone scheme. Also reminding the board that there are thirty different types of non-residential uses that could go on this property, including a retail store, in, which is a, which is a buy right use or a permitted principal use. Also, we're looking at banks, eating and drinking establishments, personal business, recreational facilities, lodging halls, assembly halls, funeral homes, recreational facilities, offices, a multiplicity of non-residential uses that generate traffic could go here on this particular land. Interestingly, one could put a motor vehicle service station on one piece of this as a permitted conditional use and perhaps a number of the conditional use standards would go away if the applicant simply struck a line and put the convenience on another lot. That serves no practical planning purpose to do that. To join these two uses which are naturally married for all the reasons that I've given as an efficient one-stop shop, make perfect planning sense here and putting the analytics aside of, of the, uh, I'll say the quantitative relief that the applicant needs. Certainly from a qualitative standpoint, is a much better zoning alternative, uh, than what the zone plan contemplates. And with that, I'll, I'll pause.
Thank you, John. Uh, Mister Chairman, I think that addresses at least the bulk of what we'd heard. If there were direct questions, I certainly miss them. If there's anything else we can answer or help with, uh, be happy to do so.
Alright, thank you, Mister Prime. Let's see. Alright, the next person I have in the queue here is, um, uh, Joyce, uh, Shaheen, I believe. If you, uh, would please unmute.
Shaheen.
Shaheen, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, please state your full name and your address and, uh, be sworn in.
Yes, my name is Joyce Shaheen. I live at twenty-six seventeen Auburn Court in the Brittany Lakes and Meadows Development.
Hey ma'am, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I, again, I apologize, but. And again, I apologize, but I do want to remind you that, again, anything regarding traffic, circulation, anything that was touched upon by the Wilsons has already been stated on record. So that will be addressed by this board. So if you could please just bring anything new to light that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. During the last meeting on December 16th, it was stated that this project was good for the community because of the retail selection of goods and services that a super Wawa will provide. This benefit to the community was part of the reasoning behind allowing variances and allowing a retail food operation to occupy the same space as a gas station. I'm quite confused by this claim and the suggestion that somehow what Wawa offers is necessary and unique. The following retail operations exist within close proximity to the proposed Wawa. Four Wawa stores within a five-mile radius, including two super Wawa and two regular retail food establishments, all Wawa. One Royal Farms within one mile, providing both food, personal goods, and gasoline, and it already operates 24/7. One ShopRite supermarket and one Aldi supermarket within 1 and 7 tenths miles that provides food. One CVS and one Walgreens within 1 and 7 tenths miles, which provide toiletries, food items, and household products. And again, the CVS is open 24/7. As well as these businesses, our neighborhood has four additional gas stations within a 1 and 7 tenths mile radius. Can you please explain why the construction of this super Wawa is important to the community and what it provides that is not already easily accessible? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prime, would you like to comment?
I'm not sure exactly what the, I understand what she's saying, but really that's Wawa's decision. If they decide that this is the appropriate use, it's not a use variance here. The use in that regard is really not in question. So I'm not 100% certain. Are you looking for data why Wawa thinks it's a good idea to be here? I'm not sure I'm clear on that.
Having to mute and unmute is a bit of a. So. I don't remember whether it was Wawa's presentation, but it was mentioned at the board the last time we met that this was meant to be good for the community. And that was one of the justifications for approving variances, such as a selection of gasoline and retail food at the same place that was not on the original zoning usage. And so this is not a unique area. I mean, we have so much already. I'm not sure why that's considered a valid justification of approving a variance to the use of it. Not sure if that made it clear or clearer as mud.
No, that's fine. Thank you. I think we can have our planner touch on it briefly, but beyond that, I'm not sure there's much else we can offer. John, you want to step in for a second?
Sure, just as a point of clarification in terms of the legal framework that as a planner I operate within and the board as well. This is not a use variance. Saturation and redundancy of services may be a consideration if we were dealing with a D1 use variance, but we're dealing with a D3 variance here. And I think as the board's planner guided the board, the appropriate consideration are those deviations, not the use itself, not the products that are being offered, but whether the setback makes sense, whether the building height makes sense. Those don't relate to whether there's another gas station in the area or whether there's another convenience store. So it's really, in my view, from a planning standpoint, not a relevant consideration of this application. Thank you, John.
If there's nothing else, Mr. Prime.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Killian.
Could I make a suggestion, please? It would be helpful if when the folks testify, they try and direct their statements to the specific conditional uses that are under discussion here, which variances are required for. As I understood it, it was the depth, the setback, the height, the fact that propane tanks were outside, the fact that it's combined food and gasoline. I want to listen to what everybody has to say, but during the last set of testimony, I was having trouble figuring out which of those issues were being addressed. Okay, so it would be helpful to me if the testimony could be directed to the variances that we're talking about on the conditional uses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Killian. All good points. Okay. So next, I will call on Mr. Frank Irodi. Is that right?
Yes.
Please state your full name, your address, and be sworn in.
It's Frank Irodi, 107 Holiday Court in Mount Laurel.
Sir, you please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you.
And real quick, Mr. Irodi, as mentioned by one of the board members, Mr. Killian. Again, if you could just tailor your comments to the relevant items that are up for discussion regarding the variances and waivers.
Yes, in fact, I'll ask a question of the board first. It's my understanding that this board is also, besides the variances, also acting as the site plan approval?
Yes.
No, we are not here for site plan approval, just the use variance.
Suzanne, I think he was asking if this board would have that jurisdiction and deal with it.
I apologize, okay.
That answer is yes, but that's not happening tonight, right?
Thank you.
Tonight is they have to get over through these questions first and they'd have to return on a separate evening to the board with the board to actually act like a planning board at that point. Am I correct?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so I believe that my testimony and my questions are more geared towards the actual site plan approval.
Site plan and the conditional use. I didn't want to jump in and interrupt you, sir. I'm sorry about that, but it's for everything, the application.
So you are, I'm sorry, site plan is tonight as well?
It is, yes.
That's what I.
Oh, Lord, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought I'd heard.
Yeah, the applicant had clarified that at the prior meeting. I believe I was under the same assumption originally that it was just the use. And I'd mentioned that and the applicant clarified it at the prior meeting. Okay, then I will go ahead and proceed with my statements and questions. So I will be commenting specifically on the traffic impact section of the document titled Wawa Traffic RPT 6-2020D09 and the recently amended version, Wawa Traffic RPT 12-2020D09. We believe there are technical and structural deficiencies in this report and with the traffic study in which the report was based. These deficiencies should cause the board to reject the current application until the deficiencies are remedied and a new report is submitted. Some excerpts from the document. Section 1.1, the following intersections were studied. Route 38 and Hartford Road, Hartford Road and Site Driveway, Sixth Avenue and Site Driveway. The issue here is the intersection of Walnut and Route 38 is not identified as studied. As this will be the primary return to Route 38 East, the study must include the impact to this intersection. Its culling to return to 38 may cause impatient drivers to continue on Sixth and exit from the liquor store egress. Section 1.2, the statement is, "The proposed Wawa with drive-through development is most similar to ITE Land Use 960." The obvious issue here is this Wawa does not have a drive-through. Section 1.2, "The Wawa use relies heavily on pass-by traffic, especially during the morning peak hour when motorists stop in to pick up breakfast or coffee on their way to work. Pass-by trips have a significantly lower impact on the roadway since these motorists are already driving along the frontages of the property." The issue with these statements is there is no egress directly onto Route 38 from the Wawa development to return as pass-by traffic relies on an exit and a return to the same frontage roadway. In this design, vehicles must navigate additional streets and intersections they otherwise would not be on to return to the pass-by roadway, creating additional impact. This in effect nullifies the concept of lower impact pass-by trips and instead creates new trips on three roadways, Walnut, Sixth, and Hartford Road. Section 1.2, "The amount of traffic to be generated by the proposed Wawa was calculated based on data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers (ITE) in Trip Generation 10th Edition. While IT has no specific pass-by rates for this type of use, similar pass-by oriented businesses have pass-by rates in the magnitude of 75%. The applicant's traffic engineer utilized the NJDOT recommended pass-by rate of 76% during the AM/PM peak hours and a lower 50% pass-by rate was utilized for the Saturday peak hours. The issues here are the traffic from the previously approved Taco Bell is not mentioned, so appears to have not been considered. Lunch traffic, which is high volume and not pass-by, was not mentioned. And visual observation and counting of similar pass-by traffic was not conducted at actual comparable sites located in the general area, being other super Wawas on Route 38 and 73. Observable traffic, instead of book lookup guidance, would show heavy peak breakfast and lunch lot use of commercial vehicles, landscape trucks with trailers, oversized vehicles, and patrons eating in their vehicles, all of which significantly reduce the parking areas and increase the likelihood patrons would park on Walnut and Sixth or in surrounding parking lots. Section 1.2, "The following table summarizes the anticipated total pass-by trips and new site trips for the proposed Dunkin' Donuts with drive-through." That's the actual wording on the traffic report. It appears this report was either based on a Dunkin' Donuts and not a Wawa proposal or was an obvious copy and paste since they themselves referred to drive-through twice and Dunkin' in the report. As you know, Dunkin' Donuts is not.
If I may, sir, if I may, sir, you're actually referring to my report. I'm the board traffic engineer. I realize that I made some mistakes in my report. I issued a new report dating December 3rd, which I corrected those items. So you're referring to my traffic review of the site. You're not really referring to the applicant's traffic study.
Okay, in the revision, it still has the mention in 1.2 of the proposed Wawa with drive-through. I saw in the, we're allowed to speak. I saw that the revision was done. I believe that that may have apparently been in response to public internet chatter that exposed that the word Dunkin' was in that report.
I was unaware of that, but I did notice that and I do apologize. That's why I revised the letter.
Okay. With these document deficiencies highlighted for the board, we believe the board cannot grant approval or issue conditional approval until these deficiencies are remedied. A proper traffic study is completed, which includes all intersections plus observational and survey comparable usage, and new documentation is submitted to the board for review. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, my report is just, it was based on, I did have some mistakes in my report and I do apologize for that. What the gentleman was referring to was my report, not the board's, the applicant's professional report. That report prepared by the applicant's engineer, again, met the access code, was submitted to the NJDOT. And it's my understanding the DOT is preparing to approve this project based on some minor plan revisions, if that's, if I'm speaking correctly, Nick. But it's my understanding the report was prepared in accordance with the DOT access code. And again, what the gentleman was referring to was my review of the report and I do apologize for the mistakes in that report, but I did try to correct them in my latest reports dated December 3rd, 2020.
We have the latest reports, Miss Landustria. We're aware of that. We have no issues with it. Our only comment would be this is pending as previously stated before DOT. If for some reason they weren't, they did not approve the application, we'd be back before this board. So it's not really relevant beyond that.
Understood.
All right, thank you. Next, I will call on Mr. Stephen Stern. Please state your full name, your address, and be sworn in.
Sir, could you please raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got? Thank you.
Yes.
Pardon me, Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, are we not to not discuss traffic issues?
I was going to let the gentleman finish this thought, but I will reinforce to Mr. Stern, as well as other people that are going to testify, the impact and traffic impacts and accesses off of Route 38, off of Sixth Avenue, off of this entire, all the four streets that go around this proposed project are all under the jurisdiction of DOT. And the testimony relating to these, you know, we've heard it several times and quite frankly, it's not evidence that the board can consider. What the board can consider. Um, what the board can consider is the traffic circulation within the site itself and testimony that's relevant to the factors that they don't need for the conditional approval and the factors that relate to the bulk variances they're seeking. So with respect, sir, but what you're providing right now is really not relevant testimony because this board cannot and should not be considering it in making its decision tonight. So I respectfully ask you if you have something else that is relevant to the conditional approval factors that are at issue or the bulk variances, we'll be glad to hear it, but I'm gonna ask you if you could move on in terms of the testimony relating to traffic on Route 38, the accesses, all the things which aren't within the jurisdiction of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Stern. Mr. Prime, is there anything that you'd like to comment on?
Uh, nothing. I think, uh, Mr. Cook did a great job of summing up kind of where we are. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, next I have, uh, Janice Gruber. If you'd like, if you'd like to, uh, speak. This is, uh, Mrs. Gruber? Let's see, I see you have your-
Yes.
Oh, okay, there you go.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find the unmute.
Uh, please state your full name, address, and be sworn in.
My name is Janice Gruber. I live at 333 Cedar Lane in Mount Laurel.
Hey, man, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
And again, and again, I respectfully request, you know, if anything regarding traffic circulation on any of the main roads, it's, it's not testimony that we can base our decisions on, so.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. My question is concerning the lights. And, and why are we, uh, why are there waivers being permitted to allow for increased intensity of light? The Wawa will be open for 24 hours and will have light flooding into the yards and windows of nearby homes that have existed on Hartford Road for decades. Uh, why was this decision to allow a variance made? Although I'm not a professional, um, I have read some research suggests that artificial light at night can negative, have a negative impact on health, increasing risks for obesity, depression, sleep disorders, diabetes, and cancer.
Man, just, just to clarify, the board has not in any way moved or approved of, of the lighting at this point. That's the issue before it. So it's the applicant's burden to give us sufficient evidence as to why the board should consider that. And your testimony as to why it shouldn't is also going to be given due consideration. I just want to make it clear, there's been no decision to allow anything at this point. Okay?
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. But you are going to take that into consideration at a later date?
I, what, what you're raising is a legitimate factor that goes to the conditions that the board is considering tonight. So if that's a question, I believe right now, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the lady's question.
Yeah, I was gonna say- Mr. Chairman, I just had a question following up with the question of Ms. Gruber. Um, she brought up lighting issues, which is site plan. Um, but she talked about a variance that was already granted, but that was confusing to me. Uh, not, nothing, they, Wawa has not asked to do anything with lighting that they're not allowed. As far as I know, that some other body or board is approved. Is that correct?
Mr. Frank, uh, Mr. Chumbala?
Uh, Chairman member support, the, the waiver that the applicant is asking for is to be allowed to utilize LED lighting in lieu of the required metal halide lighting.
So they're just asking to use the more modern environmentally friendly lighting?
Correct. It's also more-
It has nothing to do with whether it's more light or anything. It's just a more modern version because whatever we have written is outdated.
It is correct. That is the more modern standard. It's, uh, more environmentally sound and actually has less, uh, look spill-off of light onto adjacent properties. It's one of the advantages.
Okay, I get it, but I'll now shut up and let the applicant respond to Ms. Gruber's questions. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I, I think that that was pretty well summed up. We'd asked for the LED substitution. I think your planner mentioned during the last meeting that it was an outdated standard in the ordinance and he supported the waiver. Uh, we cut off our testimony at that point. If, if there are further questions regarding the lighting, I'm sure we could speak to that. I, I don't, I don't believe we can speak to, you know, the, the, uh, increased obesity, cancer, those things. I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, we'd be doing you a service if we testified to that. I don't believe we have any data to support that one way or the other.
Mr. Prime, the one thing I'll, I'll ask you to comment on, just for clarification. Um, so the site plan that you were, that you've submitted, the lights, the photometrics and everything on that site plan, um, conform to the standards, um, that are allowed?
Correct. We'll comply with all township ordinances in regard to lighting levels. It was just the type of, type of lighting that we'd requested the waiver for.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's so long, the board engineer?
Yes, Mr. Wong.
So, Mr. Prime, the request for the max min ratio is being withdrawn or is that still on the table? For the lighting levels?
I'll defer to our- Mr. Sharrow, I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Okay.
If, if I could clarify, Bill, um, that's for the ratio but not the intensity, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I wasn't sure. Thanks. So can the applicant clarify? Are, are you asking for that ratio still?
Yes, we are asking for that ratio. Thank you.
And if you could just give a quick description of what that, I guess in layman's terms, um, to help Ms. Gruber with that, um, waiver entails? If, if it's not pretty intensive, what in fact does the ratio, um, cover?
So, so what it does is it, it's a maximum lighting area and a minimum lighting area ratio, um, average. So basically your ordinance requires three to one. We're providing a little bit more than that um, in the areas of the entrance and exits, the, and the canopy, as well as the delivery area. Uh, those are the areas that need to be safely lit.
If, if I could clarify for the board, the ratio has to do with um, the brightest light spot and the darkest. And, and what's the difference between those two? Um, so they're asking for, um, the ability to have some of the areas that are brighter. There's gonna be more brighter areas than darker areas, uh, on their basic plan. I mean, that's kind of putting in layman's terms. The intensity of the light itself will comply to the ordinance. The actual, um, onsite foot candles will comply. But often areas, um, you compare a ratio between some of your darkest areas and some of your brightest areas. And that's so you get smooth lighting across the property. And that's the relief they're asking for because where it's brighter, it will be brighter than relative to the darker areas, if that helps.
So, so basically if you're thinking of colors, the gradient is gonna be a little more pronounced as opposed to a, a little bit smoother transition?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Um, Mrs. Gruber, is there anything else that you'd like to make a statement on or?
No, I, I'm, that was my, my main concern.
Okay, uh, thank you very much.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, next I have, um, Miss, uh, Mr. Michael Pascuzio.
Yes, um, Mike Pascuzzo, one Sheffield Lane, Mount Laurel, New Jersey. Hello. Hello.
Uh, Mr. Evan, you're, um-
Evan, you're on mute. He, he, sorry, Mr. Pascuzzo, our-
You're really good at that. Sorry about that. Sir, please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I've been on all three of these Zoom meetings, uh, that the public was allowed to participate in and, uh, thankful for the opportunity to finally speak. Uh, many, many issues here. I wanted to start off with a couple of things. Uh, this is my second time in front of the zoning board. Approximately three years ago, I was the gentleman who spearheaded the, uh, no cell tower at Larchmont Swim Club campaign. And we spoke in front of the zoning board and I'm happy to say that we were able to prove our case against Verizon and their, um, ill-advised cell tower plan and, um-
This, this is about the Wawa?
Yes, I'm, I'm aware. I'm giving a little background as to, to why I feel so passionately about this. I'm a 42-plus year resident of Mount Laurel. I graduated at Len, from Lenape High School, been coaching track at Lenape for 42 years and buying my gasoline and getting my vehicle serviced at Style Sanoco for 40-plus years. Uh, all of which I consider to be relevant to this issue. Um, you know, I, on the previous Zoom call, uh, there were many professionals that spoke and, uh, actually some gentlemen were more informed than others. With regard to the requisite parking spaces needed for this project, uh, the township was very clear and specific that 52 spaces were required for this size parcel. Wawa argued that 50 was adequate and that in fact they could make do with 47. Uh, that's one issue that I have, uh, with that. Uh, other issues with the non-compliance, which, uh, leads to this, I mean unheard of number of variances that are being requested. The, um, lot width and the lot depth, the lot depth not only falls short, it falls significantly short, almost by half, 200 feet being required, 125 feet being available. Uh, the back space, uh, buffer between the back of the convenience store and the, uh, the adjacent street, uh, which is, uh, Sixth Avenue, uh, requires 50-foot setback. There's, uh, less than half of that at only 24 feet. Uh, the height of the building Wawa is proposing not only falls short of the, uh, of the requirements of Mount Laurel Township at 20 feet or less in height. They've actually proposed 33.3 feet. So not only does it not comply, but it almost doubles what is, what is adequate for that size. Uh, parcel now, propane tank exchange, also non-compliant for this parcel of land. Ice chest outside of the convenience store, non-compliant. Food and fuel sales, non-compliant, okay? Um, the facade signs, um, from my understanding from the previous meeting, the one facade sign on the front of the convenience store was allowed. The sign on the side, the Hartford roadside, was proposed by Wawa, but not allowed by township, uh, regulations. Uh, I'm trying to race through this because we've been on this call for so long and I wanna, I wanna get all of my issues in. Sidewalks, it's my understanding that sidewalks are needed on all street frontages and Wawa's proposed plan does not allow for that. Water runoff, the area already floods frequently and I might say is adjacent to an already designated wetlands in Mount Laurel, which is now being, if not totally infringed upon, certainly, uh, adjacent to. A nine-foot fence is higher than the six-foot allowance around their dumpster area. Uh, these are just some of the many non-compliant issues Wawa has proposed for this. In fact, it seems that Wawa is determined to put what they want on this parcel of land, regardless of Mount Laurel's regulations, stipulations, and the proposed usage for this, uh, for this parcel of land. Uh, you know, I was, uh, you know, I was dismayed about some of the disinformation on a couple, couple of the gentleman professionals made. There was a gentleman from Wawa who stated that Wawa is a New Jersey company. Anyone, uh, who's ever been to a Wawa and has even a pedestrian knowledge of their company history knows that this is a Pennsylvania headquartered and founded, uh, corporation in Wawa, Pennsylvania. I've been there myself for my business interests. Uh, that was misrepresented. Also, we were allowed to endure a lengthy filibuster by the same Wawa rep telling us what a good steward they've been in Mount Laurel and how they've, uh, invested in Mount Laurel years ago, all of which the time was entertained and the gentleman was allowed to filibuster to the conclusion of a three and a half hour Zoom meeting upon which the public was not able to speak because of said filibustering. Um, also, I'm understood that we're not allowed to talk about the economic benefits of Style Sanoco. But the Wawa rep also spoke about economic benefits to Wawa employees that this store would provide. And, uh, he was defending the economic benefits to Mount Laurel Township. Whereas we were told we specifically were not allowed to defend the economic interests of Style Sanoco and Luke Oil. So I found that a little bit disingenuous. Okay, um, John McDonough, uh, Joe, John McDonough, uh, muddied some of the issues with the non-compliance. Uh, you know, we're looking for the document dates for the traffic volume report. We were stated the traffic volume reports were done in 2018 and 2019. Has any, um, have any dated and notarized, uh, traffic reports from those dates been, been received by the township to verify it? Anybody can say anything at any time to back up their opinion. Okay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Pascuzzo. If, if that, if that's a legitimate question, um, to, if they keep, uh, track of everything, um, could we, could we have their, their planner or traffic engineer respond to that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, uh, Mr. Prime? If you would, please?
Want to just restate that for us? What, what specifically is, is the question?
Well, the, the question is, we, we, we were given, um, several incidences of, um, misinformation, which I just, uh, uh, which I just told you about, uh, and, and one of them was that, um, not misinformation, but we were told that traffic volume studies were done in 2018 and 19 and we've never seen any documentation to that fact. So I'd like verification of that fact. Um, I think that should be presented to the zoning board if it has not already, uh, been done, but, uh, no one has discussed that, uh, in any detail. So that was a big question I had.
Okay, Nick, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Uh, Appendix C of our traffic impact study submitted to the board as well as the Department of Transportation includes all of the traffic count backup, uh, that was noted.
Thank you.
Okay, um, again, I said, I'm, I'm racing through this because I've been on all three of these Zoom calls and trying to get to all of my notes here. I have, um, I have so many posted notes here, you wouldn't believe it. Anyway, um, also, uh, the Wawa representative or the traffic, uh, professional stated that the Super Wawa at Martyr Avenue- professional stated that the Super Wawa at Martyr Avenue, um, is not, uh, shared use uh, with regard to their parking. Uh, it's not shared use with Martin's Liquors and the Dunkin' Donuts. And they also had, uh, I believe a dearth of parking spaces at that Wawa. But, uh, we were told on the previous Zoom call that the, um, parking spaces were, uh, issue was alleviated by the shared use of Martin's Liquors and Dunkin' Donuts. Can you please expand on that?
Uh, yes, I could take that. Uh, that was a misrepresentation of what I said. I said that it was a shared use and that's why we did not do a parking count at the Martyr Avenue site.
Okay, so it is a shared use and that's documented and approved by the township, yes?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, um, couple of other issues that I had really quickly here, um, the service bays at Stiles Sanoco. To my knowledge, that is the only, uh, place in the area where you, you can have an automobile service. Of course, the Wawa location would not provide those services and, um, we need to, uh, you know, protect the consumers in the area. We're, we already have gasoline at Stiles and Luke Oil and Royal Farms and many other locations immediately in the area, but we don't have a lot of service bays. And, uh, Sanoco has provided an invaluable public service with regard to their service base. And, uh, I don't think that should be discounted in the board's decision with regard to, uh, moving forward with the Wawa project. I think that, uh, the Wawa project not only jeopardizes, uh, Stiles Sanoco for gasoline sales, which is not a consideration, I understand, but should Stiles Sanoco, uh, not be able to continue at that location, the community would lose a valuable, valuable public resource with regard to those mechanic issues. Um, that's regarding that. As I said, I'm trying to keep up with all of these notes. Um, also, late in the last Zoom call, there were, uh, several misrepresentations with regard to the number of gasoline bays that the Super Wawa would provide. It was repeatedly stated that there would be sixteen by two different, uh, professionals. And then finally, at the end of the Zoom meeting, one professional came in and interrupted and said, please, excuse me, excuse me, it is twelve bays. Now, while that was corrected, it leads me to believe that many quote professionals in on this project aren't really familiar with the complexity and the, the details of this Wawa location. You care to comment on that?
I don't, uh, I, I'm not sure. I mean, our, our experts were all qualified and accepted as experts before the board. They've all testified and worked on dozens, if not hundreds, of projects like this before. So I would certainly dispute that, but I mean, there's not much more to add. I think at this point, it's clear where your comments are headed.
Understood, understood, Mr. Prime. My point is that these gentlemen were speaking as professionals and were, were putting misinformation out there or, or mistaken information that only very late in the game did a third professional step in to correct them. My point is, they didn't seem to have an intimate knowledge of what this project entail. And another issue with that was the wall, the, for lack of a better way of, uh, describing it, a retaining wall along the Walnut Avenue street side. Uh, I believe it was Mr. Sharrow was repeatedly asked about the makeup of that wall, the sized stones that were to be used. And, and he was very, um, non-committal on it and said that he would find that out for future, uh, for future reference. But I would think at this point in the game, all of these details would have been finalized by now. And yet it seems so much of this project on Wawa's behalf is still fluid.
It's just that certain site details are worked out during construction. My understanding, unless the board professionals feel otherwise, was that we'd answer with a satisfactory response if the board was, board found acceptable. So unless I'm missing that, uh, I think that's been addressed.
Okay, quick question, uh, with regard to EV charging stations at this location. Why are there none, uh, planned for the site when a new Super Wawa has just gone in on Route seventy-three in Maple Shade with, I believe, six or seven EV charging sites? Uh, I'm wondering why that is, is not represented on the site plan?
Hey, sir, I'm gonna touch in now. I've given you a lot of leeway and I did that for the reasons you cited, that there was some leeway given in the last hearing, some of which I agreed to you. Uh, went to information that arguably went beyond the four corners, but whether or not there's electric for charging cars is not part of this application, is not any regarding any of the issues. So I'm gonna ask you to please confine your comments to things that relate again to the conditional use and the variances.
Sure, okay. Um, maybe Mr. Sharrow or one of the other professionals can answer this. Um, what is the exact, uh, distance between the, uh, pumps and the, uh, C-store parking spaces? There is an allotted space from the end of the pump island to the rear of where a vehicle would be parked in front of the convenience store. Can someone tell me what that distance is for this project? Anyone?
I'm not sure. Um, Mr. Sharrow, do you have any comment on that? I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm coming in. So Olive will share my screen. You can point out to me exactly which. So are you looking for this area or this area?
The area from the pump island to the rear of the, uh, where the parking spaces in front of the convenience store are, where a car would be parked, just say the rear of that vehicle with regard to the, uh, the island. What is that distance on that gray strip of driveway from the island to the rear of whatever vehicles would be parked in front of the store?
So from the actual island?
In front of the island closest to the, the convenience store, yes?
It's thirty, so from this island, I'll zoom in. From this island, the outlaw, the outside edge, the square rectangle is the actual island. From this island to these parking spaces is thirty-eight feet.
Yes. Are you aware that the, uh, the, uh, safety on-site, uh, for converging vehicles between pumps and convenience stores, sixty feet is required between the service island and the rear of vehicles parked in front of the store? That is the requirement, sixty feet.
By whose standard? Not the townships.
Well, I, I'll tell you right now, um, I have a brother-in-law who is a recently retired ExxonMobil executive and what he did for a living was procure the on-the-run, uh, convenience store service stations for ExxonMobil. And that is the standard for the distance between service pump islands and the back of, uh, the parking spaces in front of a convenience store. And he built many of these stores in New Jersey, not to mention around the entire United States. And that is the safety buffer for those converging vehicles between the pumps and the convenience store.
Mr. Crook, we just ask again, that, I mean, this is completely irrelevant. Uh, it's hearsay, we have no idea who this person is with Exxon. I mean, this is way off track.
Well, this.
Excuse me, let me speak. I will note for the record that the gentleman is giving testimony from a third party who's not here to be sworn, who is not and has, has not been recognized as an expert. The gentleman himself hasn't been recognized as an expert. So the testimony has very little, if any, credibility or any relevance to the board. So I just, sir, I'd ask you to move on to things that actually.
Mister. Mister Crook, that is fair. Mister Crook, that is fair enough. I ask that the zoning board look into that issue because it is relevant. And if I'm wrong, then there's nothing ventured, nothing gained. But if I'm right, why has Wawa not provided that, that sixty-foot buffer? These are questions that.
Okay, you made your, you made your position known, sir. The board will take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in closing, and I know you're thrilled with that, but that's great. Okay. In closing, I believe that this facility is on too small a parcel. Wawa knows it, they're trying to shoehorn in this facility into a parcel of land that it is not meant to fit on. And that's where we are. And that is the reason why there is a need for so many variances in the first place, Mr. Crook. And I want, I would like the, the board to understand that. And Mr. Crook, I spoke before you with the cell phone tower and while not, not a professional, you guys did take all of my research. I handed you guys pre-prepared research and you took it into consideration. And you guys actually found that Verizon was not in compliance and they had provided the board with misinformation, which is all I'm asking is for transparency here with this Wawa project. I'm not against Wawa. I go to Wawa seven, eight times a week. I love Wawa. I just don't want Wawa to force their hand where it shouldn't be forced in the township that I love. And Wawa's a great company, but I think they're off-base with this project. And I, I, uh, I conclude my comments with that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'm going to stop the meeting and, uh, for a five-minute break. If, if. If, uh, Susanna, uh.
Okay.
That's okay. All right, um, so it's now nine twelve. Um, we'll reconvene, let's say, like nine eighteen. Right? Uh. Um, and next in the queue, I have, uh, Nikki Sampson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, please state your, uh, full name, your address and be sworn in.
Nikki Sampson, thirteen twenty-three Haynesport, Mount Laurel Road. Am I in?
Yes, uh.
Just have to unmute, ma'am. Ma'am, please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you.
Okay.
Uh, please proceed and again, I'll, I'll just keep making a statement, um, you know.
Relevant, I know.
Well, and if, and if, and if someone has, uh, brought it up previously, it's already on record, so um, just any, anything new.
Right, and I've actually crossed out some things as I've heard people speak about it, just in the interest of time, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I will be commenting on the document titled Wawa Site Plan two zero D zero nine eleven dash twenty twenty. And specifically the onsite truck vehicle circulation diagrams on pages twenty-one through twenty-four. Um, at some point, I'm gonna ask to share my screen if that's okay. Okay, we believe part of this site plan may be invalid and need to be redrawn and resubmitted. Specifically on page twenty-four, the delivery vehicle circulation plan is based on a WB fifty forty-two-foot trailer. But Wawa does deliver with WB sixty-seven fifty-three-foot trailers. An eleven-foot difference in trailer length would significantly alter their traffic pattern as some turns would be impossible. I'm gonna try and share. Check the tree. Okay. There are also significant issues with onsite truck navigation, even under ideal circumstances. Such ideal circumstances would be severely compromised by common occurrences such as snow clearance, piles, vehicles with trailers, oversized vehicles and people eating lunch in vehicles. And lots of people do that at Wawa, we know, myself included. So the following observations are factually documented by Wawa's engineers in the vehicle circulation diagram provided by Wawa. So we'll start with the delivery trailer, that's on page, from page twenty-four. And I've listed it on the right and I'll highlight the ones that are now still relevant because some of them, as we talked about, aren't relevant and aren't allowed to be discussed. Number one.
Ma'am, sorry to interrupt, ma'am. Are, are you trying to share your screen with us?
Did I not?
We are not seeing anything shared.
All right, hold on.
I could also interject that Wawa does use multiple trailer, uh, truck trailers here, but in this, at this store, we will only be using the WB fifties that we put on, uh, the site plan submission.
You will only be using those?
Nothing larger.
Can you see that?
Very good. Now we can say, thank you.
Ah, hold on, which I can't see what I need to read. Okay. All right, so you said you were not going to be using any fifty-threes at all, ever? So you do not need those for the triple refrigeration?
Mr. Sharrow can comment on it, but I don't believe we're using anything beyond what we discussed here, uh, what we submitted for.
Yeah, Wawa uses, uh, multiple trucks throughout their arsenal, uh, this site due to, um, due to the, due to this situation, they will be using a W fifty for all the deliveries.
So that's your standard deliver, your, so your standard delivery of a fifty-three that has a triple refrigeration, you do not anticipate ever having those on that site?
Not this particular site.
Is that usual for, is that usual at other sites that you have that you never use the larger one?
There's many sites throughout the state that are very, that are much tighter than this, um, that we use the W fifty trucks for, for the deliveries.
Okay. All right, let me just regroup for a second. So we're gonna continue assuming a, uh, forty, uh, W fifty forty-two-inch trailers diagram is used. So the truck must cross over the entrance curving. The truck has to swing right into the parking area and cuts well under the fuel island.
Hey, baby. Sorry, Mr. Evan Sampson, can I, uh, interject one second? Um, can everybody make sure that you're, uh, please muted? Uh, Harriet Insler, I believe is unmuted and we're hearing.
I am so sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, proceed.
Can I continue? Okay, thank you. Number three, if we look at, uh, the truck must swing right into the parking area and cuts well under the fuel island. And number four, no vehicle can be present at pump one. Presence of a vehicle at pump one would prohibit trucks from moving forward, thus blocking the entrance and backing traffic up, but I can't talk about traffic on thirty-eight, so I'll move forward. Diagram also shows an unreasonable expectation of a sharp right turn at that point. Number six, trucks must swing left back into the fuel pump area to navigate between building and fuel pump area. Number seven, trucks must then swing left into parking area to reach loading zone. Number eight, parked delivery truck will fully block other vehicle navigation through loading zone, including emergency vehicles. Number nine, truck must then swing right into parking area to exit, but will still have to cross-exit curbing. And then number ten and eleven that I have on here, let me see. Uh, I cannot talk about those because they have to do with exiting and traffic on Sixth Street, so I'll leave those alone. Um, I have another one to share, let me see if I can get that. Get back to my sharing screen. Leslie Plans, sorry about that. I'm gonna go on with the other ones, but I, I'm not gonna waste your time because it's late, because I can't figure out the sharing as quickly as I want to. Um, um, on page twenty-one, you guys have that with you, I believe. Gallon fuel trucks, the one that's ninety-two-hundred gallon fill trucks. Um, I want to talk about trucks must swing right into the sidewalk in order to navigate around the fuel island. No vehicle, again, we talked about, can be present at pump one. Presence of a, a vehicle there would prohibit the truck from moving forward, blocking the entrance. Um, trucks must then swing right into the parking area to reach the fuel fill area. And then also trucks must swing right blocking the entrance. Um, and also enter the sidewalk in order to navigate towards the exit. Again, no vehicle can be present at pump one. I think it all goes back to understanding and our concern that this is a very small lot for. Again, no vehicle can be present at pump one. I think it all goes back to understanding and our concern that this is a very small lot for these and requesting even some of the, um, variances that you're asking for, um, will require some areas of sacrifice and, and it, the sacrifice is a space that's very, very small. And finally, I want to talk about the box truck. That would be your page twenty-three, the thirty-foot box truck. The trucks must swing right into the sidewalk to navigate the entrance. The trucks must then swing right into the parking area in front of the building and then they have to swing into the parking area to reach the delivery area. Parked delivery trucks will block other vehicle navigation through the loading zone, including emergency vehicles. And the truck parking as depicted forces trucks to back up into the Sixth Street exit entrance to navigate out. And again, trucks must cross the parking area and landscape island to approach the exit. I think our biggest concern with this is that is I feel like a Wawa is trying to put a square peg literally into a round hole there. And, um, we do not believe that this is, uh, a suitable space for this super Wawa to be built. Those are my, those are my concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, um, again, I guess, Mr., I'll ask Mr. Crook. Granted, these may be relevant, but I don't believe that, and I apologize, I don't believe that these comments tie into the, the, uh,
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, the comments, then the, the questions raised, I believe, don't go to the conditional use, but in terms of the site plan, there are questions about circulation onsite, how the trucks will be accommodated. So I believe the comments were, were a hundred percent appropriate. And I do believe that, you know, if the applicant should be given an opportunity to answer the questions or address the concerns if they desire at this point.
Okay, I just want, I just want clarification so we can, we're staying on track. Um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Prime, if, um, you would have your engineers, uh, please comment.
Um, sure. I think, I think we'd addressed site circulation during our direct testimony. I believe your professionals commented and I believe we appeased uh, any and all concerns about site circulation. So unless something's still outstanding from one of the board professionals, Ms. Sampson is not a traffic engineer, we appreciate her comments. We'd leave it at that. Thank you for your comments.
I will say I was at all of the meetings as well and I heard them. It didn't satisfy mine, but I guess I'm not an expert.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, all right, and next I have, um, Karen Brager.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, please state your full name and address for the record.
Karen, Karen Brager, one oh two Apple Lane.
Hey ma'am, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. So my question is, is quick, um, and it specifically concerns the variance that's being given in regards to the amount of property behind the Wawa structure. So from what I'm hearing, um, and, and what I've heard in the past, the building needs to be at least fifty feet from the street. And I believe that it's only a, that this will only be twenty-four feet from the street. And so my basic question, um, either for the applicant or for the board would be why this variance of a little over fifty percent would be permitted? What's the reasoning behind this? I know I can't ask if it's been done elsewhere, et cetera. So I'm just going to ask, um, you know, just kind of why, why would this be allowed since it is such a large amount? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prime?
Sure. Um, John, do you want to take this one about the, why this would be allowed?
Sure, sure thing, Tyler. Um, you're with me as I get to the visual here. So here in the B-zone, there's your proposed building up against Sixth Avenue with a setback of twenty-four feet. In the B-zone, for any of those thirty uses that I, uh, previously mentioned, if this lot were subdivided and cut in half, a building could be within fifteen feet of Sixth Avenue and could be thirty-five feet high. We're talking about a thirty three-foot high building and that's only the tower element. The building itself complies with the twenty-foot height requirement. So this building mass is smaller and further set back than what could be contemplated under the zone scheme if this was built out under any of the conventional, uh, B-zoning parameters. So whenever we look at a variance application, we look at whether it constitutes a substantial departure from the zone scheme. And clearly that's not the case here. Again, bearing in mind, we're looking at a lot that has frontage on essentially all its sides. So there is a practical difficulty or a hardship there as well.
Thank you, John.
Thank, thank you. And I guess I would just ask, which I know that just by saying this, that it is just being considered by the board, um, specifically as well as, other than the applicant, but the board also, just that these numbers are taken into account. Thanks very much for your time.
And if I could qualify, this is the board's planner, um, that would actually be considered a front yard. If you divided those lots and thirty feet would be required, not fifteen.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, next I have Barbara Blonsky.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, thank you. Again, please state your name, address and be sworn in.
Yes, I'm Barbara Blonsky. I live at twelve Kenton Place, Mount Laurel, New Jersey.
Ma'am, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I will make this quick, um, because my question is very similar to several others that were asked. But I know that in the, um, documents, there was a question about the ability for fire trucks to actually enter and maneuver on the property. And it seems to me that fire trucks would have difficulty similar to what everybody has brought up about truck traffic within the property itself. So I was wondering if there had been a report submitted to the fire department and if they had dealt with the issue of running over landscape, um, impediments and actually being able to maneuver around the building and around cars. Um, also in order to get in and out of the property, the fire trucks would have to go over two lanes of street, but I know that's Department of Transportation. So thank you. That would be my question, access of fire trucks.
Thank you, Mrs. Blonsky. And, um, our fire, uh, fire marshal, uh, Mr. McVay, um, did, um, review and submit a report, but if, uh, Mr. McVay wants to make a quick statement regarding this?
Sure. Um, I mean, we, we have a review to circulation plans that the applicant has submitted and they are, um, they have, they have satisfied all of our, they've used our turning tablets, um, to show how our, our largest fire truck would operate on this, on this piece of property and has, uh, it meets all the conditions that we would need to circulate this property in, in event of emergency.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, next I have, uh, John King.
Hello.
Yes, Mr. King. Okay, if you would state your full name, address and be sworn in, please.
Uh, John King, fifty-three Chapel Hill Road, Mount Laurel, New Jersey, oh eight oh five four, obviously.
Hey sir, if you could raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, again, my name's John King. I've lived in the township twenty years. Our office has been in Mount Laurel for thirty years. I'm a thirty-four year.
A little louder, please, John.
Yep, yep. Uh, lived in the township for twenty years. My office, uh, has been in the township for thirty, uh, thirty-some years. I'm a design construction manager for thirty-four years. I've done numerous projects in Mount Laurel and uh, have, I, I try to take construction projects from the owner's perspective because quite often I represent the owner and then I take it from the township's perspective or wherever we're doing the property and we try to make the project fit the way it's supposed to be. I've designed multimillion dollar projects and I've built multimillion dollar projects. Uh, Mount Laurel Township has been, I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to be the voice of reason briefly. Say some points. You're going to get the points. You'll understand them. Mount Laurel Township can be, can be pretty tough. They, um, an extra neighbor tried to sell his house. He didn't have a fire extinguisher. Uh, they put it on the countertop. The township came back and said, uh, we're not going to pass you. We'll give you another month till you screw it to the wall and they left. What I'm trying to make is there are reasons why these rules exist. There's reasons why a building property has to be so big. There's reasons why all of the people behind us that created all these rules put them out there. The, uh, you know, to come in and, you know, to ask for simple things like the ones I crossed off, you're selling something outside, we get it. The height of the canopy, that might affect the people behind if it cuts off their sight line to the street and they wanted to see the cars drive by. Those things aren't really surmountable, but when, when people like Wawa come to people like me and the board and they say the property's not big enough, it's not wide enough, it's not deep enough. There's reasons why those rules exist. And the reasons why they primarily exist are for safety reasons. Safety on the property, somebody with a wheelchair, somebody that's disabled. Mount Laurel just came to my development, which is about a stone's throw from the township and spent days putting in little handicap ramps at the end of my street where we don't even have sidewalks. Why did they do that? Because they care about every single person in this community from that level up. But then we have somebody like Wawa coming in and, you know, they're saying, well, if somebody comes in off Sixth Street on a wheelchair, they can maneuver to that piece of property that's not deep enough and they'll be able to get onto the property somehow. And then when they try to get off of the property, you know, they can cross across the grass to go to the Taco Bell. They, they have every answer for everything. They really do. One, one thing I learned a long time ago, as much as I went to Drexel for construction management and, uh, was top of my class. Um, one thing, one thing that stuck with me in my world, I know a little bit about everything, but not enough to get in trouble. That's one of my mottos. My second motto is anybody with an education, including myself, loses common sense.
I'm sorry, Mr. King, if you could, if you could just keep it relevant to the, uh, the topic, please.
It is relevant, but, uh, I'll continue. Point I'm making is you're trying, as everybody said, we're trying to put five pounds of stuff into a, into a three-pound bag. And you guys are being asked to say it's okay. I'll end at this. How many, if you guys approve this, how many more times are you going to approve? No, 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 no wheelchair accessibility, no sidewalks, not enough space, somebody crossing in the back that doesn't have enough room because we didn't follow our forefathers, somebody gets hit by a car. How many more times are you guys going to deal with those people suing you versus the, the Wawa people maybe taking you to court because you don't let them do it? There are more properties out there that these people can situate their prop, their, their business on. That's the big picture. They're asking you guys, and I'm not going to change your mind. You guys have to hear everybody. We squeeze it in, do we make it work or do we just ask them to find another property? There's many other properties. You're going to hear that common thread for the next three hours and the next two meetings because everybody's going to say the same exact thing to you. Don't forget that. Don't forget that. It's the guy in the wheelchair that I'm thinking about.
I should clarify for the board and the residents, this will have handicap access. And it's going to have curb cuts, et cetera. They are.
Side streets, off the back roads coming, they just, the guy just said from Wawa to get from Taco Bell, you can cross across the street, then you can jump up on the grass and then you can roll across the grass to get to our sidewalk. Again, you, you know, it, it doesn't make, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I'll, I'll, one more thing, I'll end at this because Mr. Kramer brought it up last week. And I know I'm not allowed to, but the Wawa that's at Lenala Road and thirty-eight, I've seen flipped over vehicles. And I've seen numerous ambulances there because they pull in off thirty-eight, they go to use the jug handle to go to the mall and then they pull out of that same spot, which they're going to do with Stiles. I leave Stiles, I'm afraid to get into that jug handle. I wait for the light to change.
Mr. King, we, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate your passion, but again, it's really hard. We, we can't, we can't deal with, uh, the traffic issues.
Hear everything I said at the beginning about the guy in the wheelchair and the property being too small, trying to get to the building. And the first person who gets hit by a car, I hope you guys think about that.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. King. Um, Mr. Prime, is, is there anything you want to comment on? If not, I will continue on.
No comments. Please continue.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Redstone.
I, I just for the record of that, no one's asking us tonight to waive any requirement, any ADA requirements. So I don't want anybody in the public or on this board to think that anybody on this board is waiving ADA requirements or being asked to. I just, I'm not going to sit there and let that be a thought that may follow that testimony.
As a follow-up to that, if, if the board votes for approval, that approval would be subject to any and all other requirements of various state and federal agencies if, if applicable. And part of the requirements, of course, would be compliance with any accessibility for disabled individuals, et cetera. I will note that I, I allowed Mr. King to go, but a lot of what he said is not relevant. And if it continues, I am going to start enforcing more seriously the requirement that people focus again to the conditions that we need to deal with. Um, Ms. Sampson, I think did an excellent job in raising issues that are relevant. And, uh, that's the type of things we need to hear. Things are going to help the board decide the matter based on the criteria they have to consider, which we've stated numerous times so far tonight. So be guided accordingly. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, one more thing too, I, I don't disagree with anything our solicitor said, but I want to say to everybody in the public, it's not that issues you're bringing up aren't relevant. Okay, a lot of issues you bring up are relevant. It's just that what the matter is that this board that we're allowed to consider is so relevant to what we can consider. So I don't want anybody to take from this that when we say something's not relevant, it doesn't mean it's not relevant in the grand universal scheme of things. It means we are only allowed to consider the bulk variances they've requested and the five conditions they don't meet. And, and that's it. And anything that doesn't have to do with those, we could talk for five years, but we're, we're not allowed to factor those in. Or if we, we base our decision on that, we'll get appealed and a judge will overturn us. So just want everybody to know that concerns aren't irrelevant. It's just that what we can consider, we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Redstone. Okay, um, next I have, uh, Jason Speedy.
Spyby.
I'm sorry, Spyby.
Mr. Chairman, that's quite all right. I get it, I get it all the time. Yeah, so I am at twenty-five oh three Saxon Drive here in Mount Laurel.
Okay.
I froze there for a second. I apologize. Sir, can you please raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, uh, with you all as well as your attention and the diligence um, that you've all had throughout these meetings. I have two items I'd like to raise this evening. Um, the first one's sort of quick, uh, related to the parking spots and lot depth variances that we're talking about, uh, which I feel tied to the matter of traffic and pedestrian, uh, traffic, motor vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic on the property. Could someone from Wawa teams of professional, uh, team professionals speak to the matter of only having six pumps? Uh, which is twelve bays, I believe, at this location, whereas all, I believe it's most if not all other Wawa's along Route thirty-eight, certainly the ones within any proximity of, of this new location, having at least eight pumps, um, or sixteen bays. And how that smaller number of bays going from sixteen to twelve, um, may impact traffic or queuing, uh, traffic queuing on the site. And, you know, or surrounding the building, the pumps, um, entrances into the site, things of that feature.
Sure. Um, Nick, do you want to take that, the smaller, uh, amount of MPDs, how that affects traffic queuing on the site, I think was the question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, we've designed all different twelves and sixteens all throughout the state of New Jersey. Uh, this site, uh, was determined early on that, uh, twelve was adequate to service the, the potential demands here. As we've heard from a lot of other people, there are a lot of, uh, Um, as we've heard from a lot of other people, there are a lot of, uh, these types of facilities in the area. So, uh. You know, as we start to, you know, put more sites in and, you know, we have competitors that are in, in the area. Uh, we realized that we're not going to get the same businesses when we only had a couple stores. Uh, so we're confident that the twelve works here and we've never seen any issues with any of our other sites with twelve as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so then a, a related question to the board. Um, was there, is there, was there any ordinance? I, I wasn't at the last, I was at the last meeting. Was there any ordinance, township-related ordinance related to the number of pumps that was driving that decision or accounted and played into any of the other? Um, factors or variances or anything like that, or was that, is that kind of not a in play at this point?
We, we don't have an ordinance that limits the number of pumps or requires a certain number of pumps.
Understood. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, secondly, moving on to my next point. So I believe it's important to note. Um, that when we're considering all the conditions and variances being requested of these ordinances, particularly when we talk about circulation within the property. The parking lots, uh, you know, the layout of the lot, the number of spaces. Um, the layout around the perimeter, I believe there was a lot of conversation in the last meeting, although we haven't talked too much about it today. Related to bushes, sidewalks, visibility, uh, completely understand some of that plays into the DOT's realm. Um, but it sounded to me like some of that played into Mount Laurel's boards, you know, uh, jurisdiction. As well, so forgive me if any of this I'm speaking to is not in play, but I think at least some of this is. Um, but in, in, in those components, and I think most of those are, are. Related to the conditions and variances we're talking, we've been talking about. There are important external factors that have to be considered here. Um, for one. The development of the adjacent property across one, on a Ave, which is the proposed Taco Bell that we've spoken about some already tonight. Um, will likely drive increased traffic to the immediate area. Um, secondly, there are three Wawa stores within a two mile, approximate two mile radius.
I'm sorry, Mr. Speedy, again. Again, and Mr. Cook, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, again, the number of Wawa's that are in, uh, you know, in proximity or. Anything regarding the Taco Bell and traffic are, those are not in play as part of this.
If I could, if I could, I, I'm only referring to these as they relate to increased traffic inside the property. I don't mean to speak to them on the road traffic. Or about impacts to economy or anything of those, that nature. But if you feel that's not, uh, relevant or in the scope, I.
And I believe some of the question related to landscaping and site-specific items, which are relevant. So I was, I was allowing it to continue to that extent. So. The gentleman, I think it's, you know, the gentleman's free to ask, to the extent the question goes to. Off-site traffic or what might have occurred at, at other sites, I can tell you, sir, that's probably not relevant to. What the board decides, but issues you want to raise in terms of. Landscaping or the arrangement of parking or the circulation within the site. Of course, that's something that is relevant to the board's decision. Does that help you?
Yes, Mr. Cook, that, that exactly is, is what I'm referring to. So I could just finish this statement and if you feel that none of it pertains to. Go by, I would completely understand. So, um, picking up from where I left off. So. The adjacent plants across from the property as well as considering, um, the fact that there are other Wawa's within the area. Um, what I wanted to point out related to that is. Those other considerations, it's likely that some existing traffic to those other Wawa stores. Especially the closest store, which is not less than three traffic lights away, will now divert to this new location. Um, again, not speaking to the external traffic outside the site, but truck numbers that will now be onsite. So when we talk about parking spaces, we talk about visibility and importance or queuing outside the property. Um, and being able to see the entrances, you know, based on whether a fence is too high or whether shrubs are, are too high and things of that nature. Um, those now become into play because comments that were made, particularly in the last meeting. Um, all seem to focus around traffic records that were provided in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. I certainly wouldn't object that they're valid if. If there weren't other new, very nearby Wawa's or if there wasn't other plans for major development in the immediate area. Um, but I think with those considerations in, included, if they were not included and they did not seem to be. Um, that perhaps those considerations are a little bit amplified, right? That there needs to be a little more consideration on whether we, the township should flex. On those areas. Um, so, you know, as that may lead to further increased traffic. And if it changes the landscape, this new store changed the landscape of other nearby Wawa stores or plans. Um, that that may further impact the traffic and the, the busyness inside the new proposed property. Um, further, it's been referred several times, especially in the last meeting. That much of the traffic, I believe as much as three quarters was, was quoted by one of Wawa's engineers. Um, would be considered, would consider this an impulse stop. Meaning that it would imply unplanned changes to traffic. Um, by motor vehicles, again, understanding the outside roads are not in play in this conversation, but. The, some of the ordinances that we are discussing signage, again, landscaping and so on. Part of that, my understanding is that part of those ordinances. Are meant to affect visibility for drivers. Coming on the outside roads that are coming up to the property, that they have visibility of what's ahead near, and adjacent to the properties, right? So not only do they see a Wawa's upcoming. Or not see it, um, do they see or not see other properties before or after the property? Um, but then they have sufficient time to make a judgment call, make a stop and make a change and so on. Uh, and that's why part of those ordinances are there and exist. So, um, I, to close, summation of, I know there was a lot to digest there. My, my. My summary comment is that. Well, you know, any one of those individual variances may have a good reason to be approved individually. Um, and I'm not saying there is or isn't based on our discussion, but if the board feels there is. Uh, that may be a different consideration from whether we approve all of these in aggregate. Um, because I feel that when you start bending multiple ordinances of this nature. Uh, I think that's when some of these other safety concerns, both on the property and off. But are related, that ones that are related to these ordinances come in play. Um, so I just want to leave that comment out there and certainly if the board or Wawa teams of professionals. Like to comment or address on any of that, that's certainly fine. Um, but it was more of a comment than a, than a question. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prime, any, anything that you'd like to?
No, nothing here. Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Alright, um, next I have, uh, John Christie.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Christie. Please state your full name, address and be sworn in.
Uh, thirty eighty-one Foster, uh, my name is John Christie, thirty eighty-one Foster Town Road. Mount Laurel.
Sir, can you please raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, basically. Uh, is it okay to go?
Uh, yes, you proceed.
Um, basically my comment is for the. Traffic congestion within the property itself. I, I believe that most of the people will enter. For gas off Route thirty-eight and go to the pump. So their cars are facing. Um, north to south. So the front of the car will be facing the store and I think I'm correct with that. So when those cars leave. Um, if you don't come in on thirty-eight and you come around the jug handle, come in on Sixth Avenue. And, you know, no matter what you say, if you don't like, you know, I've, I've heard a couple of guys say that they don't want the. The bigger trucks to come into a Wawa. Well. Wawa is like the busiest store in the world. I don't care what you want in there, they're coming in there. And some of the parking places they were saying are too small. Or, or they're, they meet regulation, but they meet the small site of regulation. So my actual question is. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the navigation from Sixth Street. Up to the gas pump because I don't, I think you have to go in, you're going to have to go into the gas pump. North to south. You won't be able to go any other way. So navigating through all that traffic and every Wawa is crowded at breakfast time, lunchtime and mostly all the time. And with that little tiny lot, it just looks like it's very congested on the, on the site plan. That's, that's basically my comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Christie. Um, Mr. Prime?
Sure. Uh, Nick, do you want to take that? Sure. Um, yeah, this, this site is laid out. Uh, our minimum aisle width is twenty-eight feet. The ordinance requirement is twenty-five. Um, most of our aisles are even more than twenty-eight. Um, we have thirties and thirty-fives throughout the site. Uh, there are a lot of Wawa's on corners where, uh, some, you know, some, uh, of our customers point towards the store, some customers point towards the highway. Uh, it's not uncommon. That's why our canopy is well-designed with space in between of thirty-four feet. That if someone is parked in the, uh, at the islands that you could pass easily between. Uh, so this has been well thought out, is very similar to a lot of other sites that we design.
Okay. All right, it just looks small on the plan. You know, when you see it and then I go, I go right by the property and I just, it's hard to realize. With a big building sitting there and then caught. And, and you know yourself, every Wawa is packed with cars all the time, moving in and out. You know, they're, they just don't wait. It just looks crowded from going in from Sixth Street. Up to get gas, because then you would have to virtually go all the way back up to thirty-eight, turn around and come back into the pump, correct?
Um, the first thing, so the scale of the plan is one inch equals twenty feet. So the, the size of the actual construction is two hundred and forty times the size of what you see on the plan. So that's why everything looks small. Um, and second, uh. Yeah, cars will come from, you know, three directions on this site, uh, all circulating along the front of the building at some point on the enter or the exit. Again, not uncommon. The canopy in front of the building is, is the, the ninety percent of the stores we do with the canopies in front of the building. Just like this layout.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, next I have Timothy Lee.
I'm here.
Yes, Mr. Lee. Uh, please state your full name, address and be sworn in.
Uh, Timothy Lee, one thirty-one Yorktown Drive, Mount Laurel. Right hand.
You got it, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, um, two very quick statements, uh, I like to make. Um, the first is. Wawa employs a number of people in this area and they will continue to employ a number of people in this area. Most, most of the time in a, a location like this, you're going to be looking at forty to fifty local workers. Alright, working at Wawa, part-time, full-time, good benefits, good pay. Second. The gas station, the Snoco Station, they've said a couple of times that they are a service area. I could see them extending a tremendous benefit, having just a gas station next door to them. If something happens, people are probably going to go over to their station to have their car serviced. So that's really the points I want to make, uh, regarding this whole thing. And, uh, Michael, I'm sorry I disappointed you with that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Um. Uh, next I have, uh, Dennis Flamini.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now, thank you.
My name is Dennis Flamini. I live at four oh eight Saxon Drive.
Hey, sir, can you please raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I had a lot of questions here, uh, but Mr. Pascuso and Mr. King addressed most of them. Um, a couple that jump out at me, um. It was just stated that Wawa has well thought out the traffic and parking of this facility. Yet. The township required fifty-two spots. Wawa told the township that forty-seven's okay and that we should accept it. And then proceeded to say that with regard to trucks with trailers. Because this facility, this lot will not accept them, that you're going to have a gasoline attendant. Monitor and restrict those trucks from coming in. The board accepts that? I, I wouldn't accept that because I think it's a joke to even say it. That's number one. Um, Mr. Petrolongo, you just made a comment regarding the setbacks. Um, about if it was something else, it would be adequate. Could you repeat that for me?
Now, the, the applicant's planner was addressing a comment from one of the public. About the setback from Sixth Avenue and what would be required. The applicant's planner said it would be fifteen feet would have been required and I was correcting him and letting him know it was thirty feet would be required.
The setback said fifty and they were at twenty-four, correct?
Because of this use. Because of this use for this activity, yes, you're required to be fifty feet from the setback and that's the variant, or from the right-of-way line, excuse me. That's the variance they're looking for. But if this was a.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If this was one of the other permitted uses in the zone, not a conditionally permitted use, the setback would be thirty feet.
But it's not. This is Wawa. We're not talking about if it was something else that would be okay. In this case. It's fifty feet and they're asking for us to say twenty-four.
Understood. And I was, the applicant's planner had indicated that if. He was trying to compare and justify his variance. And in his justification, he was saying that if this was a permitted use, not a conditional use. It would have been fifteen feet. I was correcting him and letting him know it would have been thirty feet. That's all.
Okay. I think that there's significant variances that they're asking for. Uh, property widths, setbacks, uh, building height, number of parking spots. You know, the board, I understand the board can't rule on anything outside of. These issues, uh, in a legal capacity. But the board needs to rule on what's best and what is truly best for this township, not Wawa. And I think that looking at this list, it's too much. So that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you. Um. I don't believe there were any questions, uh, from you, Mr. Prime, so.
No, just that we have fifty parking spaces, not forty-seven, just to correct.
Okay, uh, next I have, um, Pat Hadley.
Here.
Yep, I got you. Please state your full name, address and be sworn in.
Pat Halby, twenty-one oh one Denham Court, Mount Laurel.
Ma'am, can you please raise your, do you have it already? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, I'm forty-two year resident of Mount Laurel. Twenty-four years as municipal clerk of Mount Laurel, twelve years as township manager, twelve years on the planning board. And I'm a retired Mount Laurel volunteer firefighter. Um. I know. Having been in all those positions that the state has jurisdiction over all those highways. My concern though is it was brought up that the traffic studies were done in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And also some of the maps seem to be incorrect in the fact that they do not identify Taco Bell. As being, um, proposed on the adjacent site. Um. And I'm wondering whether the submissions to the NJ DOT. Were updated or, or accurate and whether our township traffic engineer. Is ensuring that what is being submitted to the NJ DOT is accurate. Because those of us who have lived here for a long time have seen the mistakes that NJ DOT has made. When they don't have all the information or they're reviewing something in a vacuum. So that is my first concern is that the NJ DOT has all the accurate information. Because I think with the Taco Bell that was already approved, it significantly changes. The whole layout of that area for the NJ DOT. the whole layout of that area for the NJ DOT review. Another question I had.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I, if I may, uh, Mr. Prime, would you like to have your traffic engineer comment on that?
Nick, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, so I, I talked about the Taco Bell in, in my direct testimony. They received what is called a letter of no interest. And what that entails, essentially, the short version is it generates what they call is insignificant increase in traffic. So it's been determined already by the Department of Transportation that Taco Bell's traffic is insignificant. So I'm not concerned and they are not because they've approved the letter of no interest and are in review of our application currently.
Oh, I guess we'll be living with that nightmare then. Sorry, but NJ DOT doesn't always make the right decisions for our town. The other question I had, and I apologize because I did not see the fire marshal's report, but I have a concern about the propane kiosk. I live in a condo right now. We're not allowed to have propane within fifteen feet of our buildings. And so I am concerned of a kiosk, a propane kiosk being right up along the side of the building, having fought some propane fires in my life. So if he could just comment on that and I apologize because it probably isn't his report, but I did not get the opportunity to review it.
Um, yes, um, the, the propane kiosk will be installed in accordance to UCC and all uniform fire codes. There are special cages for these type of resale setups and they'll conform to all codes.
Okay. All right, thank you. The other, other thing, they had indicated before that their new model is to have the gasoline with the convenience stations and getting away from the old models of just convenience stores. I did see that West Hampton just approved a, or just has the first in New Jersey, the drive-through. And that seems to be their new model too, which certainly doesn't fit on this site. So my only comment is Wawa's are usually successful. We want them to be successful, but they're not successful when they go onto a site that is too small for everything they're proposing. I don't think the parking is nearly significant. Any of us that goes to the other Wawa know that every person that drives a truck with a trailer in the back for landscaping, and there are a million of them. They park across the end of the other Wawa and take up six or eight spots. I don't believe either that, that the gas station attendants are going to try to limit that and tell people they can't park there. It's, that's not in their jurisdiction and these guys aren't paid enough to be trying to throw people out. And what also is going to happen then is they're just going to get gas and go into the convenience store while they're getting gas and leave their, their vehicle unattended. So they don't take up multiple spaces. So my concern is for it to be successful, it needs to be in the right location. And I don't believe this is the right location. And there are other locations along Route thirty-eight, a little further down, where they would fit well and we would welcome them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next I have Robert Stein at Stanwitz.
Stanwitz.
Okay.
Close enough. Um, I live, I live at Nineard Lee Court in Mount Laurel. Right hands up.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm glad I'm near the end of this because I heard a lot of good comments, all of which I agree with. We're all, uh, I've been here thirty-eight years. I saw Route thirty-eight go from two lanes to where it is today. I'm at, I use Macro, the company's going to be replaced. I use Stiles Sunoco, my eye doctor's across the street. I'm familiar with the Hartford Road intersection. Not that I travel it a lot, but when I heard about this meeting and I attended the last one, I got in my car over the next couple of days and I drove that area up and down Hartford Road, up and down thirty-eight, sat there at lights and watched. Watched like I never watched before. And I think what we're all hearing is that in front of Stiles, if you're exiting Stiles and you've got to enter a Wawa and now we've got a Taco Bell and now I've got a jug handle, what's going to happen? So someone in the prior meeting brought up fuel trucks and accidents and things. Okay, so I looked at it again. I said, well, why hasn't Stiles had an accident? Well, their fuel trucks come in off of Hartford Road. They fill there, so I'd been there with a fuel truck, couldn't get in, got delayed, I had to wait. But okay, so they do what they gotta do, but they exit onto thirty-eight. The fuel trucks, and this will be a question for the Wawa, do they enter from Route thirty-eight so that when there is a jam up, that truck is not sitting in a, on a shoulder? It's sitting in an active lane of traffic? And those, and another person commented that they have to wait for the traffic light to change when they're exiting the Sunoco. I have to do the same thing. Cars are flying down thirty-eight. So I'd like to know, how are you expecting the fuel trucks to enter?
Nick, do you want to take this one as well?
Sure, we shall.
I'm sorry, real, real quick before you proceed, I'm still seeing some people that aren't muted. Mrs. Habley.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to make sure we're not having any background noise. Thank you. Hey, go ahead.
Yeah, our plan shows the truck coming in off of Route thirty-eight.
So if there's a delay, that truck is sitting out there. Now, let's talk about what if, because we've all heard a couple of comments, people coming in with trailers. My son runs a landscaping business. That trailer, when it's hooked to his truck, is as big as a regular old tractor trailer. And those guys like at Wawa at lunch, they're ending up everywhere they can park. But I'm very disappointed with the board that, that my meeting last month, you still showed a bank next door. And I think that was deceiving to all the people that were there because even I was surprised they're tearing it down for a Taco Bell. And I think any traffic study needs to be synergy or one and one equals three. You take breakfast, you take lunch and all those people going into a Wawa, adding Sunoco, but going between a Wawa and a Taco Bell is a lot more traffic than just individual. And that letter of in-concern, I'd say get that engineer and stand out in front of Sunoco and watch that traffic. There's a lot of concern there. So that's my one issue, because people do what they're not supposed to. So I looked at your diagram. What prevents someone from trying to exit the fuel pumps back onto thirty-eight, which is an entrance? Your turn.
Nick, go ahead.
Sure, I could take that. We'll have signage and striping that prohibits that movement.
Just a sign, nothing else?
Yes, just like a sign that stops you from driving the wrong way on a one-way street.
So when the guy attempts to exit, and even if he realizes I shouldn't, if that's when the cars are exiting Sunoco, other guys trying to get in, and I'll just keep mentioning the fuel truck as a what-if. You've got a problem. And what I'm really concerned about is coming up Route two ninety-five. So why would I bring up two ninety-five? Because when there's an accident at this Hartford Road, you were going to shut down thirty-eight all the way back to all the traffic coming off of two ninety-five. It's the only way to go. So I think board cannot take this Wawa as an independent. I know they're doing a study just there, but you could not ignore what's all going around it. And so that's just one. Now, my real other one is a guy comes in off of thirty-eight, he's got the trailer and they go, whoa, whoa, you can't go here. And he goes around the left-hand side of your building, which is where the trucks are going to deliver. And the truck is in the back delivering. How does the guy get past the truck to exit?
We're re-striping the rear for a loading zone and a bypass lane, as requested by the board's traffic engineer.
What you're doing, you're doing, what, what's stopping him from driving back there?
Nothing, he can drive back.
Exactly right, but my biggest concern, he can't get around your truck.
Yes, he can.
He can't get around your truck, so now he's got to back up with a trailer on him. I can see just total confusion happening now.
Mr. Chairman, the, the public made a, what seemed to be a factual statement of whether a vehicle could drive around the truck. Professional disagreed. I mean, I want to make sure for evidence purposes. What does the math show? Can a car get around it? And is this person from the public just making an assumption or a factually, can a car not get around it?
It's twenty-two feet wide. We'll have a twelve-foot loading zone and a ten-foot bypass adequate for the vehicles to circulate around.
Let me do the math here. You've got a loading area of ten feet and the truck itself is about eight or nine feet wide?
The loading zone is twelve feet wide.
Loading zone is twelve feet wide and then the truck is another ten or so, nine or ten? That's almost, that's sure over your twenty feet. That's taking up all the space. How does a guy with a trailer get through that?
The truck within the, in the zone.
Truck would be within the loading zone.
But is there a whole-
You don't add them together, it's within.
Is there a whole nother driving lane around the loading zone?
Yes.
Well, I had heard you pushing the building back at the beginning of this meeting.
No, the building is where it's shown on the plan and there's a twenty-two foot aisle behind it.
Including the loading zone or that's in addition to the loading zone?
Loading zone and the aisle combined.
Twenty-two and then another ten or so for another vehicle to get around the truck?
Twenty-two total.
No, total, so there is-
Make it clear that the truck sits in the loading zone.
Yes. And can you drive another vehicle with a trailer behind it to get out around that loading zone truck?
Yes.
I would ask the board to double-check all the numbers, because you're going to have a disaster if some guy can't get out. And he's got to try and back up.
From a personal perspective, I drive vehicles with trailers and I could make that clearance with my eyes closed.
Maybe you can, but I can-
If I may, sir, I'm the board traffic engineer. If we have a twelve-foot wide loading area, the truck is within that loading area and that leaves us another ten feet for a vehicle to pass by. That's more than enough room. There's travel lanes on roadway that aren't ten feet wide or approximately ten feet wide. So I think there's certainly enough room for a vehicle to maneuver back there with a tractor trailer in the loading area.
Including all the arcs of the turn that you need to get a trailer behind your vehicle around it?
I believe the truck can, passenger vehicle, or vehicle can make it with a tractor trailer back there, yes.
You believe or you know?
I say yes, it can make it.
I asked the board to double-check those numbers.
The board did. That's our planner. Once he says it, we can't change that.
That's the same planner that used Duncan-
The board traffic engineer.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you have to correct that man for insulting our planner.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you can, you cannot be belligerent during-
Yeah, that's not going to stand in this room.
All right, sorry.
I know it's getting late. Everybody's passionate, but we just need to stay-
He has a professional degree in it. You don't.
I have thirty-eight years of paying taxes in Mount Laurel. That's why I'm here.
Doesn't make you a traffic engineer.
No, it doesn't, but I drove it, like I said, and I have good common sense. And my son owns a landscaping company with all those trailers.
I get it.
All right. So the other last thing, and this went to someone's comment about the electric vehicles, electric vehicle charger. Mount Laurel is a great town. We've been progressive. I look at all the condominiums and the people are buying these Teslas. The only place I know there's a charging station is near the Shoprite station, Shoprite supermarket. There's like six terminals there.
And, and again, sir, I, and, and, and I hate to, I hate to interrupt again, but again, whether or not they have charging stations has, has no bearing on us in our voting this evening.
It's, it's only a point of the future. That's all.
Actually, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to hear the answer to that gentleman's question. Is this, I know some Wawa's do that, because I know, realize it doesn't affect my vote, but will this one have charging stations? I know the new one on seventy-three does.
I can handle it. We didn't apply for it with this application. The, the electrical vehicle charging here is a partnership with Tesla. The program's run somewhat independently. If it's coming, it'll be later down the line. It's not proposed right now.
Sorry, I digressed from what-
Thank you, John, because it's a big upgrade. I think you're aware. This is not a simple thing. Okay, all right, I think I'm, uh, oh, oh, one last thing. As I was doing all this driving around, there, to my, to my, I don't think I saw a regular street light right at the beginning of the jug handle, meaning I'm coming down thirty-eight and I realize I do want to do a jug handle, so I see the sign, but it's really helpful since now I'm going to have an entrance to a Wawa and the Taco Bell to be able to clearly see that jug handle entrance. So if there's a way in the planners can work it out to have some traffic light and make that really well lit, so otherwise people are going to turn whether they don't want to turn, you know? And a procedural question is, are we making a final decision after this meeting or is there going to be another meeting for everyone to speak?
This is it. If, once we get through the public portion, it'll come back to the board. The, the applicant will make their closing statements and the board will make their decision this evening.
All right, so all the questions that they had about traffic and the Department of, of DOT not being part of this conversation all were from you, kind of.
Well, they, they are in that, it's, that's not our jurisdiction. So we could, we could approve this, but the state doesn't have to. That's a whole different path. That's a whole different set of things.
Any approval given by this board, sir, is going to be-
We're only dealing with a little slim piece.
Okay, any approval given by this board, one of the conditions is it's subject to all other necessary approvals, which would include the approval by the DOT.
Okay, that's good, good. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next I have Jeffrey Barron.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Barron, please state your name, address and be sworn in.
I am Jeffrey I. Barron. I am an attorney at law, admitted to practice in the state of New Jersey. My office is at F S six hundred thirteen oh seven White Horse Road in Voorhees, New Jersey. And I am representing Norman Shay Bell, who is the owner of this property.
Okay. So, Mr. Barron, you're participating tonight as an attorney representing somebody else's interests. So, Mr. Chairman, in that capacity, the gentleman is not required and should not be required to, to swear, be sworn in. He's simply stating a position on behalf of his client. Do you, do you agree with that, Mr. Barron?
You'll correct me if I go over the line and start to testify, Mr. Crook, I'm sure.
I will.
Good evening, members of the board, professionals I think I've worked with or against every professional that's been on the, been on the tape tonight. Good evening, Mr. Crook. I'm testifying, obviously, or if not, obviously, in favor of the application. And there's a few points that I'd like to make. First of all, I just want to read because I think it's important for the public to hear this. This is what the Supreme Court of New Jersey said in regard to this type of use, a conditional use. It was decided in nineteen ninety-four, it was in the Coventry Square case, which changed the law in New Jersey to make conditional uses significantly easier to obtain. This board and every board in this state is obligated to follow the strictures of the Supreme Court's decision. Even if they might think that welfare would be better served, even if they think that something might be safer. If they don't have the authority to hear it and decide it, they cannot make it part of their application consideration and approval. The Supreme Court said, we hold that the proof of special reasons that must be adduced by an applicant for a D variance for one or more conditions imposed by an ordinance in respect of a conditional use shall only be proved sufficient to satisfy the Board of Adjustment that the site proposed for the conditional use in the context of the applicant's proposed site plan continues to be an appropriate site for the conditional use, notwithstanding the deviations from one or more conditions imposed by the ordinance. Thus, a conditional use variance applicant must show that the site will accommodate the problems associated with the use, even though the proposed use does not comply with the conditions the ordinance established to address those problems. So clearly the court is saying, we know you're not going to satisfy every one of the conditional use standards. You wouldn't be in front of the zoning board if that weren't the case because the jurisdiction on a conditional use is in front of the planning board if you meet all the conditions. So the court recognized that and said, we know you're not going to meet every condition. So those of you who have said, well, there's too many variances. The Supreme Court clearly considered that and said that that's up for the, for the board to decide. They also said, and this goes to what Mr. Killen said, and I know Mr. Killen's been on the board for a long time because I've been coming to the board for a long time. So I'm aware of that.
Jeff, he's shrinking. We can only see the top of his head now.
Yeah, I know. But you know what? There's a lot in that head.
Joke, but it's.
Sometimes it's been good and sometimes it's been tough, but there's a lot in that head. He's right. And this is also what the Covenantry Square Supreme Court said and also what is in the current land use, New Jersey Zoning and Land Use Administration that was originally published by Professor Cox and Professor Koning. I'm going to quote from the most recent edition, 2020. It says that proofs to support a conditional use variance need only justify the municipality's continued permission for a use notwithstanding a deviation from one or more conditions of the ordinance which suggest that the site might be unsuitable for the use. Similarly, the Covenantry Square Court limited the focus of the negative criteria to the impact of the deviation, not the impact of the use. So Mr. Killen was right. You look at those conditions that are not being satisfied, conditions of the conditional use, which you have heard significant testimony on, and look at those to see if they've been satisfied, not everything else. So those I would briefly review with you had to do with lot width. I don't believe the lot width is non-conforming in all points. I think the lot width is non-conforming on several sides, but not the whole site. So that's, that's an issue I think the board is entitled to consider. The lot depth, it is not non-conforming in all places, but it is non-conforming in one or two places. And again, I think the board can consider that. And the reason that it's non-conforming, this is in a regularly shaped lot. This isn't a rectangle. This isn't a square. As a result, it creates conditions for development. The courts have recognized that in regard to C variances. And in fact, that is a justification for a C variance and a regularly shaped lot. It makes development practically difficult, practical hardship, we call it. So this type of variance also could be considered hardship if it was a D1, a use variance, but it's not. It's already deemed to be appropriate in this zone. It's a permitted use. The question, as I said from the court, is are the deviations able to be handled, satisfied, complied with, under the facts of the case? The other height, nobody said anything about what the problem would be from height. Several people spoke about height and said 33 feet. Well, in a residential zone in Mount Laurel, you can have a house that's 35 feet. So it doesn't strike me that this is such an extraordinary height and particularly on a major artery in Mount Laurel, which 38 clearly is. And I would point out that along this area of 38, it's almost all commercial. That's, that's the way it's evolved. And there are frankly, a number of zones in Mount Laurel that have evolved that way in various places, Church Road and others, where other uses have come in, where residential uses at one time ruled. And the board has to take that into consideration. In regard to the trailers, which by the way, I think is a very good issue. I don't know if the board has done this yet. They may have. But I would suggest to the board that they require signage that indicates in the entrances to the site that trailers are not permitted in any of the parking areas of the site. Does that mean they won't come in? No. But does it mean that it gives a better position to the Wawa folks to be able to enforce that? Absolutely. They could just point to a sign and say, I'm sorry, but we don't permit those here. So I think that might be a good idea. Now finally, something that hasn't come up in the whole hearing, all the hearings that I know of, and you couldn't have brought it up because I don't think you know about it. When Mr. Shay Bell entered into the agreement with Wawa, Wawa was concerned that there is already a use on this site. And that use is a billboard sign. That use is still there. When I say it's still there, the structure of the billboard is still there. Under the theory of abandonment in New Jersey, we're very comfortable that a court would find we have not abandoned that billboard. Our agreement with Wawa requires that if they obtain approval, we must remove the billboard. We must take the billboard down and allow Wawa to continue with their development. We originally wanted to keep the billboard. But after negotiation back and forth, we agreed to remove that. I think that is a significant consideration for the board to take into account. That billboard and all billboards, you know better than I, Mount Laurel's policy about billboards, signage isn't related to a use on that site. That billboard, which is a significant size, the removal of that, I think is a, is a big win for the zoning board. And I think that however it came about, that's what we've agreed to do. And we will abide by that. We will take the billboard down if this is approved. We will put the billboard up if it isn't. We will begin to use the billboard once again, which is our right, I believe. Because otherwise, there is no income producing use on the property, which isn't fair to the owner of the land either. So I ask you to take that in consideration, that you'll get rid of a non-conforming, perhaps undesirable, depending on how the board looks at it, use in favor of a use that is conditional and therefore approved. From what I've heard, there has been no testimony that would be sufficient to indicate to you that the variances saw from the conditional uses make this site no longer usable for the intended purpose. It's zoned that way. You do your zoning summary in accordance with the land use law in a certain number of years and the governing body looks at it. And if the governing body believes that the zoning is incorrect, they have the ability to write it, so to speak. And they haven't done that. Haven't done it. It's the same zoning. So respectfully, it's a unusual position for me to be in. But I urge you, I urge you to approve this application more times than not. I'm on the other side. But in this particular, Mr. McDonough will tell you. But in, but in this particular application, I do, I urge you to approve it because I believe the law requires you to approve it. I wish you all a happy new year. It was great to see Ms. Albee. It's been too long since I last saw her. And I'm, I'm very happy to see her. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. I don't believe there's anything Mr. Pine would want to comment on at this point.
No, nothing here. Thank you.
Okay. Next I have Shannon Wilson.
I believe Sean Wilson is next.
Well, I, I believe, I believe Sean testified along with his wife in the bidding. Can, can he re? Can he speak again or has he already fulfilled his obligation in the beginning?
He has something new to add, Chairman. He certainly can, but he might just have his hand left up from before.
Okay, all right.
So you probably should ask him.
I mean, the caveat would be it has to be something new. Not going to listen to repetition of prior testimony.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, do you have something additional to add or? Is Sean Wilson still on?
Mr. Wilson, you're on mute.
I wasn't seeing him.
Don't mute me.
There he is.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
And you're still.
I'm reminding you, you're still under oath, sir.
You're still under oath.
Yes, sir. Yeah. I just wanted to.
On the record.
On the record, the Wawa professional had said that that our driveways were out of compliance with the, with the DOT. But in fact, the, in 1988, the New Jersey DOT took 150 feet off of our property and took 10 feet off of Hartford Road. Yeah, 150 feet off of Route 38 of our property. So we were in compliance until it came, until they came in and widened the road. You know, we were there before the road had four lanes. We were there when it was only two lanes. So our property extended all the way to the medium strip, 150 feet. So I just wanted to correct that on record, that our property was there first and that we were in compliance. So that I just wanted to correct that. And then one other question was to propose 50 parking spots, two of them are designated just for the air pump, which should not be counted. And I don't believe when, when you look on this site, that there's, is there 48 actual parking spots?
I see 42.
You see 42, but not 48.
On Wednesday night. Mr. Chairman, you might want to ask Mr. Barron to mute because we're hearing his planning for the week.
Oh, is he? There we go. Okay, Mr. Prime, I believe Mr. Wilson was done. Would you like to respond to his comments?
No comments. No, feel free to proceed.
No, wait a second.
Well, I was just asking for the, for the number of parking spots. That where, where were they designated? Because when we, we count the parking spots, there was, there's only 42.
And they have it labeled on the air pump that.
It's labeled on the air pump that two of them are designated just for the air pump.
Matt, do you want to pull up the site plan or cover it if you know it off the top of your head?
We're doing. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
So there's 50 total parking spaces, two of which have air stalls. One is designated as an air stall parking stall.
Are you counting some of the parking as underneath the canopy?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, just, just within on top of the site there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But the air pump is in code, so you're not allowed to count those parking spots, correct?
No, they're parking stalls.
No.
So in Mount Laurel's Carl code, 154-43, I believe those parking spots are not, are separate.
They're not allowed to use them as parking.
Please let the gentleman finish his testimony and then you'll be given an opportunity to respond.
I'll look, I'll look up that code.
And the other, and there was one other thing why he's looking that up is that we we were talking about the loading zone behind with, with the car being able to get behind around the truck parked behind the building. Would the, with the truck, delivery truck sitting there, would the fire truck be able to get behind there? Because I thought that's the fire lane. So there should be no parking there.
Will we answer, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, either the fire marshal or the applicant needs to respond to that.
Yes. When, when a truck is unloading, the driver is required to stay in proximity to, to the truck. So if the building were to catch on fire, the driver would be required to hop in his truck and pull away from the building.
But you're allowed to park in a fire zone.
Well, it's actually a designated loading zone. It's being shared as a fire lane as well.
And that's, that's okay.
That's permitted?
Yes, because this, this specific area is being designated as a loading zone. So, yes.
Okay. Now back to the, to parking.
Can you repeat, can you please, please repeat that zone ordinance that you're referring to?
It's supposed to be Mount Laurel code 154-43.
Page 63, 9.
I pulled it up. Nick Verderisi, if I could jump in to move us along a little. Yes, section nine, it talks about having access to the air pump. It does not specifically say you don't count it as a parking space. It says fueling positions are not to be counted as parking spaces.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, does our planner?
This is, this is the board's planner.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that is correct. That is correct. The applicant's traffic engineer is correct on his interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
But wait, there's not, there's 44 parking spots. Where's 50? I don't see them.
Okay, there's 50 parking spaces. If you go through, there's 18 spaces out in the parking lot to the west. Around the building is another 6, 9, and 4. So that's another 18. That's 36. 11 on the right side. That's 48 and two more up top is 50.
But you're allowed to stay at the pump out?
Yes.
Air pump and park, right?
All right, thank you.
So the customer leaves a car at the pump, it's okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. If we can get Mr. Sharro to unshare his screen, this way I can see the, okay, thank you. Okay. I don't see anybody else listed on here with their hands raised to speak from the public. I'm going to make this one more time. Is there anybody that would like to make a statement?
Anything new, Mr. Chairman, anything new?
Anything new that hasn't been? Okay, Mr. Pecuzzo? If you have something new to comment on?
Yes, I, I, when Mr. Sharro put up the schematic of the facility, I counted 45 or 46 spots only. Now, you know, I was pinching the schematic to blow it up. And it's hard to imagine there's 50 there. I see 45 or 46. And that includes one at the.
Mr. Chairman, let me just ask the townships and planner or engineer.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mike Angelastro. I just counted the number of parking stalls and there is 50 on site.
Okay, okay. And does everyone know that's the township traffic engineer? Hold on, Mr. Chairman. That's the township traffic engineer speaking. He doesn't work for Wawa. He works for us. He's our independent, he works for the board and the township.
I counted them up and there's 50 located. There's 50 proposed.
Okay, there's 50. Thank you, Mr. Angelastro. There's 50 and the township requires 52, correct?
That is correct.
Right. So we're still at an impasse here. And, you know, we can't just pretend these things don't matter. We have zoning, we have zoning, we have zoning codes for a reason. And we can't just willy-nilly say this one doesn't matter, that one matters, you know? And there's so many variances requested for this project that, you know, it's just overwhelming. And that's all I want to say. Thank you all for your time this evening. requested for this project that, you know, it's just overwhelming. And that's all I want to say. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay. Again, I don't see anybody else that wants to speak. So if not, I will make the last call and I will close the public portion. I'm sorry, who was that?
Sounded like it was Mike and it sounded like he lost his audio.
Oh, okay. All right. At this time, I will close the public portion and I will bring it back to the board if there are any additional questions to the applicant.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had some questions for the applicant to help me understand this particular location. I guess the first one, I know why this location is appealing. It makes sense. I get it. Did you also look at other locations that would be relatively close to this location and what made you pick this one over those?
Okay, I'm not sure if I have anyone on who can testify to the site selection here. Mike, Riddell, are you on the meeting right now? Is it something you could touch?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I had to find the unmute button. Yes, I explained previously in my prior testimony that Wawa looked at this corridor on the east side of 295 to have a sister store with our other location at 38 and Martyr. We looked at all of the intersections east and west of here, and there just wasn't another option available to us that was as appealing, which means, you know, on a signalized corner where we can get access to the traffic light, we find that that's the safest and best location for our business.
Thank you. Follow-up question so that I can grasp the size of this Wawa and spacing. Can you compare, how is this Wawa building size compared to the one in Martyr Ave and 38? Or the one in Lumberton near 541? Bigger, smaller, the same size?
Well, I would say that it's relatively the same. So both of those buildings have a rear customer entrance. This one does not. It has about the same retail floor area, but those buildings are slightly larger because they they need more room to accommodate that customer access. I believe both of those stores have eight MPDs, whereas this one has six. We do six or eight is our customary number. We have two stores in Cherry Hill, Henfield and Yale, 38, and Cuthbert. Both of those stores have six MPDs. Others on the corridor have eight. So it's comparable. 50 spaces is our target number. We just opened a store on the 17th of December in West Hampton. And that has considerably less, I want to say in the low 40s. So 50 is a good number of parking spaces based on our experience.
And then I'm assuming based on that testimony, the employee headcount you'd expect to be at this particular Wawa at any given time would be roughly the same as the Martyr Ave store or the Lumberton store?
Yes, yes. So either one of those stores, it would be comparable. Your store in New Jersey have roughly the same number of employees, attendants. You know, and inside the store, our peaks run, you know, pretty similarly across the chain. There is some fluctuation based on employees that are part-time versus full-time and how many hours does part-time employees work?
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to monopolize. I'll shut up in a minute. But this is more towards our planner. A lot of my mind has been focused on those conditional uses that we needed to apply to. And I listened, of course, to everything about site planning. But could you do me a favor and just go through what site plan? Only things that they need variances from so that I make sure I remember what they were. Not things that they are doing exactly as code says, but what they might need variances from.
All right, they need a variance to allow an accessory structure in the front yard. Variance for the number of parking spaces.
I'm sorry, the accessory structure, is that the fueling thing? What is that?
That's the trash enclosure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Technically, this property has multiple frontages, in other words.
Right, which makes it unique in that way.
Right, and that's so that trash enclosure, which is in the back of the building or back of the site, is actually on a front yard. So technically, that's a variance. Number of parking spaces we discussed.
They need a variance for two spaces.
Correct. Impervious coverage, they need a variance for the amount of impervious coverage on site.
What's the numbers we're talking about?
80% is permitted and they're at 82.8%.
And they are putting a retainage basin?
Correct. Yes, they are. Discuss the frontage or the setbacks, building coverage, building height, we discussed.
Okay, let's go back. I'm sorry. I know we discussed that, but
Okay, I'm sorry.
Confusion. All right, so the setbacks, okay. So the public understands this is a weird situation in which all sides are fronts, which is not normal. None of the codes written for that aspect. That's why they're asking for relief. And then there was some testimony that I think was mistaken by the applicant. Can you clarify for all parking purposes, the front of this building is on Route 38, right?
Correct.
Setback requirement there? And if not, what are they asking for?
The setback on Route 38 is required to be, excuse me here. The Route 38 is required to be 50 feet. I believe their canopy is 36.9 feet. And if I could just get clarification from the applicant on that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay.
What about the building?
The building itself is 3955 and I don't see an overall dimension. Do you guys, Tyler, have an overall dimension for the setback to your building?
Matt, do you have that pulled up?
Pulling it up right now. It's approximately 153 feet. Thank you. Impervious coverage.
What was, now what would be the rear yard setback? That's where there was the confusion in numbers, okay? So I know on Sixth Avenue, we are correct?
Per ordinance, they're all front.
Hold on, Sixth Avenue is the rear, correct?
It's the rear of the building, yes.
Yes, okay, okay. So if that was a rear yard setback as opposed to frontage, what would the required buffer be?
50 feet is required by our ordinance for this type of use.
For a rear yard setback?
For, for a motor, the fuel station to a right-of-way. That's the requirement. Now for the rear yard setback of the B zone. Rear yard setback for the B zone is 40 feet.
Okay.
If this was just a typical lot, it'd be 40 feet.
So if there, it was a typical lot and there was a Wawa there, they'd be required from the building to their end of their property line to have 40 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So what is actually from the building to the end of their property line?
24 feet.
Okay. So if in effect it was a standalone Wawa and that was a rear yard setback, they'd still need a 16-foot variance?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify that in my head. If you want to keep going through whatever bulk variances that you were going through.
All right, building height is required to be no more than 20 feet. They're asking for 33.3 feet. That's for the building, not the canopy. The canopy doesn't have to comply to that.
If it was, if it was not a gas service station, if one of the byright uses went there, what's the building height allowed?
35 feet.
So they're already two feet below what's byright anyway?
Correct. Do you want me to go through the conditions or just the other?
I was just asking for the things that they're asking if variance is on so I can get around my head. I don't know about all the other members, but there's been so much. I'm just trying to get my head around it.
Okay. I'll just run through the other variances and then we can go back to the conditions if you need them. There is a variance required for the height, fence height around the trash enclosure. Six feet is required. They're asking to be nine feet. And their justification for that was that they're, the equipment in the trash enclosure is nine feet high. So they want the fence to be as high as that equipment. We talked about the accessory structure in the front yard. Fences are not permitted in a front yard. Again, because the trash enclosure is in a front yard, there are fences in the front yard.
By definition, in a front yard, but substance of form, it's the backyard.
Correct. Applicants proposing propane sales kiosks, which is not permitted. You can't have it outside.
Well, it's not the propane's not permitted, it's that outside sales aren't permitted of anything. If they were watermelons, they wouldn't be allowed to sell them outside.
That is correct. That is correct. They've asked for a waiver of the required screening for their loading area. That's the loading areas behind the building in that 24 feet. The curb is close to the right-of-way line, so they cannot fit plant material in there. Based on prior testimony, they did agree to add a fence in that area to screen that. They're asking for a waiver of the parking lot landscaping. Our ordinance requires that the parking lots be broken up into various landscape islands with shade trees, shrubs, et cetera. They've added their landscaping around the perimeter of the site as opposed to in the parking lot. I had no objection to that waiver based on the landscaping they provided and complying with the other landscape comments we had, which they said they would do. They asked for a waiver of the street tree requirement. There's two street trees per street frontage. They agreed in testimony that they would provide those street trees, so that waiver is no longer necessary. Again, the waiver for the LED lights. They testified there will be no construction trailers on site. And then for their variances for their signs, they're allowed one freestanding sign. Whereas they're asking for two. Freestanding signs are allowed to be 36 square feet and up to 11 feet high. They're asking for one of their signs to be 56.8, 59.8 square feet and 20 feet high. The other sign will comply.
Help me understand, I'm having trouble visualizing right now in my head. So they want two freestanding signs instead of one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
One on Hartford and one on 38.
Okay, I get it. Two different spots. They don't want them to be the same size. They've reduced the Hartford Road one to be in compliance. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So what are the, what is the difference between what they want in the front and what's required?
What they're allowed to have is a sign that's 36 square feet in the front. What they're proposing is 59.8 square feet. So almost twice as large is what they're allowed. A little under twice as large is what they're allowed to have. And it'll be 20 feet high when the ordinance would permit the sign to be 11. It's an eight-foot-high sign with a three-foot base would be permitted.
Thanks. Any other bulk items that there?
Yeah, the facade signage, they're allowed one facade sign where two are proposed.
Hartford and 38.
One, correct. One on Hartford, one on 38. The height of a facade sign is allowed to be no higher than three feet high. In other words, from the bottom of the sign to the top of the sign can only be no greater than three feet. And it's only allowed to be 40 square feet in size. They're asking for five and a half feet for the height of the sign. The main sign on Route 38 will be 67 and a half square feet. The sign on Hartford will be compliant in the square footage of 39 and a half square feet. They have eliminated their canopy sign. There's no longer relief necessary for that. And that is all.
All right, thanks. I'll almost be done. I reserve the right to connect questions. This is now back to the applicant. If it was given, my mind's a blank. I don't remember any testimony you gave justifying the bigger sign in the front and the larger facade signs. You may have testified. I don't remember. So you want to, somebody want to comment on that?
Sure, Nick or Matt, I'm pretty sure, looking at my notes, we covered this, but if you guys want to just circle back for Mr. Francisco's benefit. The purpose of the signs, you know, as they are. I'm going to leave that for Matt.
Wow, I'm going to do that at work. First person to get off mute gets to punt.
I was trying to find the mute button. Basically, I believe I touched upon this for the Route 38 sign. It's pretty standard for a commercial corridor or a sign that height and size. It is a commercial corridor along a four-lane highway, so visibility is key along this highway. And what was the other sign you asked about?
The side signs, the larger side facade signs.
So that is really a function of the proportion of that, that front tower element. So a smaller sign is really going to, it's proportional to the rest of the, rest of the size of that tower element.
All right. All right, I'll be quiet and let my fellow members ask questions.
Mr. Francisco. Mr. Kramer had his hand raised. Do you still have a question, a question to ask or?
Yes, I do. Let me see. They're short. There's only about four, I guess. Pretty much everything was answered that I had written down. On page 21 of the site plan, it's the vehicle circulation map. And it's so small, I can't see if it's for the delivery truck or the fuel truck. And I guess my concern is it looks like when the truck has to turn into the site, does it, it looks like it pushes out to the left and goes into the traveling lane on Route 38 before it so it can make the turn. Is that correct? Or am I seeing double?
There is an encroachment in that travel lane. This is Mike Angelastro. Slight encroachment in that travel lane.
Okay, is that, isn't that dangerous? And I guess my question is, isn't there a way to flatten out that turn-in so the truck wouldn't have to go into that lane?
Again, I'll leave this up to the site plan engineer. He did provide a buffer between the, the inner, we'll say the inner wheels. They have about a gap between this curb and the track of the wheel. It looks about two or three feet. Again, I'll yield to the site plan engineer. I think if they shifted that, that turning template down, that would eliminate that encroachment. If they turned closer to that inner sidewalk or inner curb, rather, that that encroachment would be eliminated. Mr. Sharro, is that, would that be accurate?
I think if there's, you know, we came from the center of the lane. So I think if you adjust that truck a little differently and move a little closer to the inside turning radius, we could eliminate that encroachment. Like the traffic engineer said, it's a slight encroachment, so.
Okay, okay. My other question, the same, same picture, I guess. Once the, once the fuel truck gets into the site and it continues down and has to make the left turn to get over to the fuel tanks that are underground. It looks like that It looks like that it encroaches near the, how can I say this, near the gas pumps, I guess the first set as it's, as it comes on the site, passes the pumps and makes a left to approach the underground fuel tanks. If there's a car parked there getting gas, will it not infringe on it or hit it? I mean, is that, it looks like it's, it, it could be too close when it makes that turn if there's a car parked there fueling up.
So, yeah, so these, these, this is pretty typical circulation for a truck around a fueling canopy. So, you know, the tenants know when there's gonna be a fuel delivery. So they'll clear that spot, cone it off, make sure nobody uses that, that spot for that particular, during that particular time, that truck will be entering the site.
I see, okay. And I guess this might be for Jay, our planner. I'm not sure the difference between the lot depth and the lot width. Is the depth going from 38 back to Sixth Avenue? As well not to Hartford?
Right, the width is measured at the setback. Whereas the depth is measured at the sideline. So going from Route 38 coming down, you'll see that, there's the, basically the Sunoco lot along the side lot line of the Sunoco lot. You'll see that lot line's only 120 feet. So that's the lot depth we're taking into account there. It's not the entirety of the lot. So overall, the lot meets it, but the minimum depth per ordinance is that one sideline.
And where is it exactly is?
It's the, if you're looking at the same plan you were just referring to.
Okay.
It's the Sunoco's right lot line.
Which is?
Right there.
So that sidewalk going from entrance just down to where, I guess the pumps end?
Well, goes, it's, it's along the property line, so you can see, can you see the hand moving on the screen?
Yes.
All right, so it's from, it's that lot line right there. That's the depth.
Okay.
This is a unique site and I know that's very, very confusing.
Right. And then, I guess, Mike, I have a question about the traffic report. You talked about, just grab it here. Yes, here it is. Talking about the queue on Sixth Avenue stacking area for the Egress lanes. It sounds like that there can be a lot of confusion there as far as traffic, I guess, getting out of the site because of the way traffic might stack up. Is that a concern?
It isn't so much, cause after, you looked at the, after I spoke to Appling's engineer, the, the anticipated queue at that, at that driveway on the Egress movement is one car. So again, we don't anticipate because of the, the amount of volume on Sixth Avenue, we don't expect a if can queue at that driveway exiting a site. So a single car is not gonna pose a significant problem to the outside circulation. Also keep in mind that the, the drive aisle behind the, the Wawa between Sixth Avenue and the building is gonna be one way from right to left. So you'd be coming towards that driveway. So again, there's not gonna be a lot of folks traveling behind the Wawa in that drive aisle between Sixth Avenue and the building. So again, I don't anticipate that being a significant, a significant problem based on the fact that there's only one car, the anticipated queue that driveway is, is a single car.
So you believe that most of the traffic will exit on Hartford as opposed?
There is a, I mean, I think the, what helps with the reduced queue is, is the traffic volumes on Sixth Avenue. The volumes are such that the car won't have to wait a, a long time to get a, a gap in the traffic stream to make their maneuver.
Okay, okay. And one last point, I guess. Being it's gonna be a 24 hour, it's gonna be open 24 hours. Is there any concern about noise? Being it's not that far from the residential house, the sort of catty corner. I guess, because right now, I don't think there's anything in that area that's open 24 hours. So, you know, and I'm, I guess I'm talking about traffic noise or noise of people frequents, frequenting the place, the Wawa. Is that a concern or not?
I mean, they'll have to, this site will have to meet the state's noise standards. Regardless, you know, the state has standards, the county has standards, the township has a standard. They'll need to comply with that standard. I don't suspect that the road noise is gonna be significantly higher than what's already out there apparently.
Okay, okay. And I do have one last, this is the last one. By, and I guess this would be for Bill, Bill Long. By, by getting rid of all that grass that's there on the site right now where the billboard is and heading towards the back of the site. And increasing the impervious coverage, which would be a little bit over what it should be. Could that increase, I don't know what the flooding situation is like, it's Sixth Avenue in Hartford. But I know down at Hartford and Union Mill, they have a problem there. I'm just wondering, is, and I know they're gonna have the drainage basin there. But is there a concern for flooding to occur there at that intersection at Sixth and Hartford? And does it occur there now? Is it bad? I don't, I'm not familiar with that intersection when it storms.
The floodplain associated with Union Mill Road in Hartford is actually behind the opposite side of the properties or Hartford Road. So it doesn't affect this property in question or the intersection at Sixth and Hartford. And as far as the impervious surface, the 82% and the 80% their drainage calculations have taken that into consideration on sizing of the basin. They have an underground basin as well as an above ground basin. So they have addressed that in their calculations.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mrs. LaCiaja?
Yes, I have a question. What was the total height on the signage for the, the monument signage? What's the total height?
20 feet.
20, 20 feet. All right. Thank you, thanks Jay.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions to the board? Not, I will bring this back to Mr. Prime if he has any closing comments.
Mr. Chairman, apologize before we go to Mr. Prime. I would just recommend, I think Mr. Barron, you don't hear this from you often, but I think Mr. Barron had a very good idea. In that, I think having that trailer sign, trailer prohibition sign on site would be a good idea. And I would recommend that we include that as part of the project.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I wanna, I meant to say, forgot. During the testimony, I, I forget the lady quite some due diligence on truck size. The applicant gave testimony that based on the size of this property and site circulation, that trucks would be no bigger than a certain size. Smaller, yes, but not bigger. Can we make that a condition of approval as well? Of course, that's up to the applicant.
Both the WB50 Max trailer size and the trailers, tractor trailer prohibited signage are acceptable.
Mr. Chairman, also one more thing, the, the drive aisle, the Appling's traffic engineer indicated that at, at my request, they were gonna open up that rear drive aisle where the loading area is to an eastbound, westbound traffic flow. The, the, putting area will be in that area, will be in that spot. The overall width, pavement width is 22 feet. The loading area is required to be 12 feet wide, that leaves us approximately 10 feet wide for the one-way drive aisle. The ordinance requires a 20-foot wide drive aisle for one-way traffic. The applicant will need a variance on that, on that item. Again, I think it's justified is that, that 10 feet is sufficient to maneuver through there. They also need a way, a variance from section 15469D, which requires a 12-foot wide, 20-foot wa, long space for short-term parking, essentially like a UPS truck. Again, that's a variance that will be required on this, on this application. Again, I would be in support of that variance.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
Sorry, but I, I, I have a question, it just popped into my head, I apologize. The front sign, I'm still wrapping my head around and I, I hate to do this, can we, did you already testify how that compares to the existing Sunoco sized sign and the mobile across the way? Can you remind me what you said? I think it was your planner. Mr. McDonough?
Yes, thank you. Over on the Sunoco side, I don't have the actual height, but it is a goalpost sign, very similar to what the applicant is proposing here. With the panel that has the Sunoco logo. It says Ultra Service Center underneath it. And then it's got the price indicators. So substantially on scale with what the applicant is proposing.
Did you testify the size of the Sunoco sign is relatively the same or close to what Wawa's asking for?
Exactly, yes, it is a three-panel sign including price indicators and two logos.
Yeah, I mean, I know what it looks like, my question was size.
Yes, definitely. I will say, the Luke Oil sign is lower, but that's closer to the traffic signal there. So there was probably some thought about interference with the traffic signal with the higher sign. Here, I clearly think the planning benefit of clear and safe identification of the site clearly outweighs any detriment associated with that sign, in particular, given the fact that we've got a, a compatible Sunoco sign right, right adjacent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Prime, would you like to summarize and make any closing statements?
Yeah, cause we have two separate issues before us, right? Two separate types of votes.
There, there is the
Conditional and then site plan.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so just in closing, thank you to the board, the professionals, everybody for your time, for running over our allotted time. Members of the public for your comments, obviously a lot of friends of Stiles for their comments as well. As I stated previously, the application meets the justifications required under the ordinance. This separation of fuel and convenience is, as we've testified to, is an antiquated standard. The vast majority of these new fuel stores are gonna contain a convenience component. Our planners testified to that. The township's own master plan has a note in the back that lists the prohibited mixed use of fuel and convenience in the B-zone is listed as antiquated and should be updated, it's recommended update. The deviations that we're requesting to the conditional use standards are relatively harmless in nature. Our justifications are on the record. There's been no expert testimony providing objection to, to our testimony. The use stated numerous times been permitted, is permitted in this zone subject to the conditions. And our team overall has tried to make concessions with the board, with your professionals on sidewalks and signage and circulation to try to work with you, find a middle ground here. And overall, we hope the board's satisfied. We look forward to moving forward with the project and working on another location in Mount Laurel, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prime. Okay, before I call for a motion, Mr. Crook, would you please summarize the conditions? You're, you're on, you're, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to pull up different things on my computer so I can try to keep track of all this. Essentially, the first thing, the first motion that we're gonna consider presumably is the conditional use. And in connection with that, I, for, for the record, as Jay has previously stated, the retail use is, is already a permitted use. The, the issue is whether the, the gas service section side of this in fact meets the requirements, the conditional use standards is set forth in section 15421D1. And in connection with that, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it is section 15443B. And under there, there's a different criteria listed. The criteria that the applicant has not met and which are the things that need to be considered by this board is number two, which is the minimum lot area shall not be less than 2,500 square feet. They comply, I'm sorry, they comply with that. Number three, the minimum lot debt, depth should be 125 feet. The minimum lot width shall be 20 feet. And on both cases, there is deviations where they're not meeting those requirements for lot depth. Required is 125, they're proposing 114.
I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, Kevin, or Evan, sorry. The lot width is, or lot depth, excuse me, is required to be 125 feet. They are proposing 120.8. Just to get that clarified.
Okay, I guess I was working off of your
Yeah.
Let, let, let me go back to my notes then.
So I apologize.
I'm sorry, what, what's the? What, what are they asking for, depth and width, width? I can't even say it now. Or one of?
The minimum lot depth is required to be 125 feet. They have 120. And that's the area we showed you.
So they're all five feet.
You're all five feet.
And the depth, width?
The width is compliant.
Okay, so they want five feet from one piece of that.
Correct.
Thank you.
The, and Evan, if you want, I'm just gonna run through these conditions real quick, cause there were some changes based on various discussions. The walls of any building shall be set back at least 25 feet from every adjoining property line. Required buffer and at least 50 feet from the street right of way line. They're proposing 24 feet from a street right of way line. Maximum building height shall not exceed 20 feet. They're proposing 33.3 feet. There shall be no display or sales outside of a building. They're proposing the propane tanks. And the use on the same lot or parcel for retail foods, facilities, fast food services is not permitted in conjunction with the use of the lot or parcel for motor vehicle service stations. Obviously, they're sharing the uses. They're the conditions for the D3 that they do not meet.
And in connection with that, it's been, it's the applicant's burden to demonstrate that the use would be appropriate despite the deviation from the conditions. And also demonstrate that the grand relief is reconcilable with the municipal municipalities legislative determination of the conditions that should be imposed. And the negative criteria also have to be addressed relative to the deviation from the conditions. In other words, the applicant is, is to demonstrate the site is appropriate for the use despite not complying to the conditions for the use. So the motion would be that the deviations from the conditions as cited by the board planner meet the requirements as I've stated for the D3 variance and therefore approval of the conditional use. So that's, that's the pending motion in terms of the conditional use. And we need to hear a second, a, a motion as well as a second and a vote.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve the conditional use with all conditions noted by Mr. Crook?
Just to correct, it would be a motion to approve the conditional use with the deviations as noted by the board planner and myself, yes.
Okay.
And that would include the conditions that they've agreed to, right?
Correct.
Yes. All right, can I, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, I've sat through this, I've listened to the public testimony and I hear everything they're saying, but all my years of experience, most of this stuff is de minimis. And following the law, they meet the requirements that they need to. And, and therefore, I'm gonna move that we grant these conditional variances.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Francisco and a second by Mr. Killian. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Francisco?
Obviously, I agree with my motion, I, I heard everybody today. Obviously, I agree with my motion. I, I heard everybody today. My, I'm limited to follow the law and I followed the facts and I had to, if I didn't, it would just get, could potentially get changed above me.
Mr. Killian?
I agree. I, I believe that the applicant has taken significant steps to accommodate the, the site given it's, it's very, it's vigorous. And, and I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I agree. It was hard for me to say that. I think that I'm not sure if it's a really good fit physically. But they did answer all the questions I had and pretty much most of the questions were answered that our other board members had. It was tough because again, I feel like it's almost like a Taj Mahal going on a postage stamp. And I'm just concerned about the circulation on the property. But at the same time, like Mr. Francisco said, they're pretty much well within what is required. So with that, I'm going to have to agree.
Mr. List? Mr. List?
I don't see him. He's showing that he's on.
He's on the second page of my screen.
He's waving. Are you on mute, Brian?
He seems like he's got a volume issue.
Yeah, he's not muted, but yeah.
He's saying things and waving his hands.
Right.
We see Brian, but we can't hear you.
Evan, you're muted.
Maybe we suggest that he log off and try to log back on. Sometimes that corrects that.
Can, can we do a thumbs up, thumbs down gesture? Evan, is that acceptable?
I don't believe that would be appropriate.
Okay, back in.
The problem is
It has to be an oral motion.
Oral motion, you're right. You're right. I apologize.
Be able to poll the remaining board members?
Yeah.
Yeah, poll the remainders and then give him a chance to re, re-up.
Right. So Mrs. Losiaga?
I do not approve. I felt as though there was not enough positive criteria to approve a super Wawa. I, I would understand if it was just a convenience store, if it was small. For me, it just felt like it's just too large of a project, trying to put it into a small space. And there's just too many things for us to have to approve. My concern, just like Mr. Kramer had said as well too, is the safety, the parking, the twenty-four hours. I did take actually into consideration the styles, them talking about, you know, the homeless people that were in, you know, that they found in their restrooms at their Sunoco. So for me, you know, it's, it's a bit of a concern. So we have a twenty-four hour Wawa there. It gets a bit busy. We do have residents that are behind there. Are we going to have people that are super transient, that are going to go, just go through there, hang out? The teens, these are things that I'm thinking about, you know, as, you know, as a concerned resident of Mount Laurel Township. And we, we do, we already do have a lot of convenience stores there. And I know that I was, you know, I, I just have to, I have to vote on my conscience. So, you know, I, I feel as though it's, it's not a great fit for that tiny, small space.
Okay. Mr. List, are you?
You hear me?
Back? Yes. Yes.
Okay. So I'm voting no. I, I look at the conditional use application. I consider the positive, negative criteria and the number and the magnitude of the variances. And I just don't think the site is suitable. I mean, it's different if it was one or two or three condition use variances we're, we're trying to approve, but there's more than that. So based on the use variances, there's just more, it's, it's more than one. There's more than two. There's more than three. And with that, the site is just not suitable. And so I'm saying
Thank you. Mr. Green?
You know, when I first looked at this, I thought, well, I'm like watching a Hallmark movie here. Maybe somebody will come through here at the end with some reason, but I've been doing this for eighteen years now and I, if I I, I don't see anything that I can hang my hat on to, to reject this. So I'd have to, I, I, I know what we have to vote on here. And I think the applicant's done their due diligence on this one. And, you know, I have to approve.
Thank you. And Chairman Bailey?
Alright, like the other board members, I listened to everything that the applicant has stated, their due diligence. And I realize that, you know, every, there was a laundry list of waivers and variances that they were looking for. Weighing all of those, I don't in good conscience, I, I can't hang my hat on one that was, would be a true detriment to this project. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to, my motion to approve.
Thank you. That's five, four to approve, I'm sorry, five, two to approve that motion is carried and approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Hey, so the, Mr. Chairman, the next motion to be considered is the motion on the various bulk variances and waivers. And again, maybe I'll ask for Jay's assistance in listing this. The motion is for approval of certain variances and waivers. In terms of the variances, there, there's C variances. The standard to be applied is whether there's hardship, as well as does the, the benefits of the proposed use or proposed variance outweigh the negative detriments? And whether or not in any way granting the approval would be contrary to the intent of the municipal land use law, the zoning ordinance. So with that, Jay, if you can go through and give me a laundry list again of the variances, I would appreciate it.
There's the accessory structure in the front yard, number of parking spaces, impervious coverage, number of facade signs, the height of the facade sign, size of the facade sign, number of freestanding signs, size of the one freestanding sign and the height of the one freestanding sign, the fence height and the fence in the front yard. There were also waivers for the screening of the loading area and the type of light to be utilized, the LED lamp and parking lot landscaping. And I believe Bill and Mike, did you have a couple other variances?
We had a way of variance for a short-term, from a short-term parking stall. A variance to provide a ten-foot wide one-way drive aisle where twenty feet is required.
Is there also parking lot sizes? No, the stall, parking stalls were
Stalls are fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we had a design waiver for the lighting ratio and a submission waiver for contours extending two hundred feet.
And I believe the board also discusses making conditions of approval of the site plan that the billboard will be removed and no billboard will be permitted on-site as well as commitment that trucks no bigger than the WD fifty trucks or tractor trailers, they'll be banned and prohibited from access to the property.
I think Mr. List was correct on the parking stall. I believe we noticed for a ten-by-eighteen or ten-by-twenty was required.
Your, your ten-by, ten-by-eighteen spaces had a two-foot overhang.
Got it.
And they therefore comply.
Conforming. Okay. Apologies.
Evan, did you get the fact that, that signage they agreed to put up about?
Right.
I forget what the sign was.
No trailers on site.
No tractor trailers on site, yeah.
No, no, no trailers.
pertaining to that, yes.
And I think the new trailers is different than the fact that they're going to use their delivery truck of a certain size or less. They're two different issues.
Correct.
Right, there's two of them.
Let me clarify it for the record right now. Maybe I missed that.
So there was, there's, the applicant agreed to the condition that the WB fifty would be the maximum sized trailer they will use for loading on-site.
More appropriately said to make deliveries.
For, for their deliveries, yes. Sorry. And then there's a recommendation that the site, there'd be onsite signage that prohibits trailers on this site for other vehicles.
I, I thought it was prohibits trailers in the parking spaces. They can come in and get gas, can't they?
That's
Or can they? I, I don't know.
I'd actually ask the applicant's engineer on that.
Matthew?
We could, we can sign it for no tractor trailers other than deliveries.
What about vehicular trailers, landscape trucks with their
Oh, no, that landscape trucks are, are permitted. We would have
Okay, so there would just be no parking on site?
Yes. Unless there's, unless they use a double stall like Mr. Vertery said.
Now, the recommendation was that they're, they not be permitted to park on-site.
So that will be the condition. So that being said
I don't want them parking on Sixth Street and driving them out into the road. So let's think this one through for a second.
I think we thought this was tractor trailers, but I might be misunderstanding that. That was my
Yeah, I thought they were talking about like semi-eighteen-wheelers coming in.
That's what I thought too, and that's a typical for
At least that's what I thought.
Okay.
Agreed. I, I don't want to drive the, the guy whose son is a landscaper. Him pulling up next to the poor people with the houses right there and parking in front of there because he can't park in the lot. No sense to me. I mean, they already have to deal with it. It's not making it work.
Okay. I, I have no objection to that at all.
That is not a condition in this motion. Okay, so the motion basically is to prove the variance and waivers and conditions as listed. And that the board finds that the applicant has met their burden of proof in establishing that were necessary criteria for the bulk variances and waivers. So that's the motion. For approval of the site plan.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the site plan? Per all of Mr. Crook's
Jay wants to add something.
Oh, just to clarify, it's preliminary and final site plan approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alright, first by Mr. Killian. Can I get a second?
I second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Francisco. Roll call, please.
Mr. Killian?
I agree.
Mr. Francisco?
I agree.
Mr. Kramer?
Just want to make sure I understand, we're also voting for preliminary and final site plan?
Yes.
That's what this vote is.
All those variances, okay. I'm going to have to disagree because I'm very uncomfortable with the size, like I said earlier, with the fit. So I disagree.
Okay. Mrs. Losiaga?
I disagree.
Okay. Do you want to give your
Elaborate.
Have to give you reasons.
As, as I said before as well too, it's just, there is just too many variances, just too many things. And I just, I'm not comfortable at all. So that's why I'm disagreeing. Thank you.
Mr. List?
I also disagree. There's an excessive number of variances here and, and that means the site is not suitable for this application. So I'm saying no.
Mr. Green?
I agree.
Chairman Bailey?
I agree. Again, there is, there was a number of waivers and variances, but I think in, in bulk, they seem, seem to be a detriment, but I think the applicant did their due diligence and worked through the majority of them to get the site to work based on all of their other sites that they have in the area and around the state, so.
Okay, so we have a four-three vote for a site plan with bulk variances and that motion is carried and approved.
Thank you again, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
You be blessed.